Okay, let's call the board. The regular meeting on Board of Education on July 10th, 2019. Mrs. Hutchinson, please call the roll.
Mrs. Booton?
Here.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin is absent. Mr. Long?
Here.
The end of conference. Mr. Matheson?
Present.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Edwards. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first is modifications to the agenda. Do any board members have any modifications they'd like to make tonight? Okay, first is public comments. We do have public comments tonight, so I get to read my little talk. Public comments are valuable and important to board members. We welcome the opportunity to listen to the concerns and issues that are important to our community. However, it is board's policy not to directly discuss or take action on any items until the time has been taken to gather adequate information and objectively evaluate available options. Please understand that a lack of action or response tonight does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. In addition to preserve confidentiality, the board and its president reserve the right to request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in future closed session. The board must protect the stability and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, sorry, your name and address your comments to the board. Please leave your comments at three minutes. Member Crabtree will be timing the comments tonight and raise her arm at the three-minute mark. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally or disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matters need to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's next chance to chat on October 22nd or present your comments in writing via a board, by email to the board. One registered public comment is Jan Shaw.
Hi, I am Jan Shaw.
Turn on.
What was it?
On the bottom, pretty bottom. Slide it and then we still light on the side.
Sorry about that. I am Jan Shaw and I am a resident of the district. I signed up to talk about budget. You do this every year. I would really love to see certain departments broken out such as public relations, IT. These are departments that didn't even exist 30 years ago when my kids, or 25 years ago when my kids started school. I want to know how much we're giving to all these new things. And those are not the only ones, but let me just put that out for first thing. Second thing, end-of-career bonuses. You used to give a 6% end-of-career salary spike. In fact, originally it was a 20%. When they sent them one at six, it became several years at 6%. When you got rid of that, you went to a bonus as post-deployment compensation. None of those should have ever existed. They need to go over the next contract, period. I did FOIA that back earlier this year and I actually sent it to the board in February after I got the FOIA back, so you all have that info. I sent it again to the board in May after the new board was elected, so you got that info. Did any of you pay any attention to the fact that the contract says they have to work 18 years to get an end-of-career bonus at $1,750 per year? That's $13,500, the minimum amount an agent gets for a bonus. If you look at that chart, the very first entry got $12,750. He only worked 17 years, but he got the bonus. I looked through the board meeting minutes. I can't find any reference where it was discussed that you were going to give somebody his end-of-career bonus even though he worked one year shy of what he was supposed to work for that. So, show of hands, how many board members knew this happened? I don't see any hands. Is that because you're silent or because you didn't know about it? If you didn't know about it, who authorized it? And why on earth did they authorize somebody getting a bonus that he hadn't deserved, that was not in the contract? Furthermore, I went and looked up this individual. After 17 years of work, he only had two sick days left in the sick bank, which 21 is last year. There was something going on there. I think the board needs to ask a few questions about this because the board is in charge and there's nobody who's allowed to authorize a payment such as that without the board approval. So, I want you to figure that one out. And more importantly, when contracts come up, get rid of the end-of-career bonuses. They never should have happened. Here, I'll let you turn that off.
Okay, thank you.
And for those who are curious, here's the first page of that FOIA. Have a good day, guys.
Okay, next is our superintendent report. Dr. Schuler?
All right, thank you. So, a couple of things I wanted to share with the board tonight under my report. Number one, thank you to the board for attending both of the 4th of July parades, both 3rd of July and Warrenville, 4th of July, and Wheaton. I thought both parades were great, had a blast, a lot of fun, certainly interacting with the community. And actually, one of the things that I shared a little earlier today in a building meeting is I think the board's aware, we had some family friends that joined us, joined in the parade and hand out candy. They don't live in the community, but just one of the comments that a very close friend made at the end, he said, "Boy, I could not believe the amount of people that genuinely cheered for this school district as you went by and just said, 'We love our schools.'" And so, I offer that just as an independent perspective of somebody that joined from the parade and was, and really kind of left saying you've got something special in the community, so I thought I would pass that along. One other thing I wanted to mention to the board, because a couple of people pass it along to me, and that's that one of the things that we're monitoring right now, the city of Wheaton is considering some adjustments to its solicitation ordinance. They are doing it in response to, I think, some concerns, actually quite a few concerns from what I understand, that have been raised by residents about people soliciting, especially kind of in and around the downtown area of Wheaton, folks that I think are, as it's coming to the community and selling candy, selling things that are relatively aggressive, I think, in their approach. And so, I think the city was asked to look at its solicitation ordinance and see if it could tighten it up. And so, one of the changes that they're considering, though, I think would potentially have an impact on some of our groups and that minors, basically anybody under 18, would not allow, be allowed to go door-to-door without an adult with them. And that would most certainly impact a lot of our student groups and fundraisers that sell cards, that sell things at both of our high schools. So, I will say that the city council has specifically asked for input from the district in terms of understanding that impact. We're gathering that for them and certainly will provide that. Again, I understand, you know, kind of both aspects of this, I understand that the city's trying to solve the problem and certainly want to support that, but obviously, we want to make sure we articulate what the impact of the new ordinance would be, so we are working with them and certainly will stay engaged. And then the last thing that I just wanted to mention tonight, obviously, you're going to hear a couple of reports under the board agenda for tonight that I just want to take a minute to, I guess, thank and recognize some groups that are working incredibly hard now that school is out as we're rolling over and preparing for next year. You're obviously going to hear Bill and the budget presentation tonight, which is a compilation of a lot of work and pulling pieces together for that. One of the things that Bill's going to highlight in his budget presentation is the facilities work that's happening across our schools this summer. I think we've highlighted there are, there are a significant number of major construction projects happening across a lot of schools and the fact that JR is still here, standing up and seeing straight is a testament to the way he and his crew have handled that summer work. Rod and his staff are busy getting new laptops imaged and ready to hand out to, you know, high school staff as well as getting some new Chromebooks ready and upgrading a lot of the stuff that you don't see in technology, some of the switches and the things behind the walls that his team has been doing. And then, of course, on top of that, we're working on getting the buildings cleaned and, again, kind of rolled over. So, it takes a lot to get our schools ready, to welcome our kids, which is important to us in August, and I'm incredibly appreciative for the senior leadership team and the leadership that they do of their departments to get that work going through the summer. So, we'll continue to stay on that. Really, are there any construction days left, JR?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two construction days, so we'll keep at it. That's all I've got?
Okay, thank you.
One comment on that. The ordinance that's being discussed, I was at a downtown Wheat Association board meeting today, the first reading of it will be on August 5th, 2019, for the city council, and that's the date in which, you know, information will be provided for pro or con. And the solicitation issue, they're talking about a 16-year-old, you know, versus an 18-year-old, so, but, you know, it requires a supervising adult to be with them, in sight and all kinds of stuff. So, again, you know, it has, we've talked about it as we've talked about fees and so on and how significant fundraising is to some of the sports programs. So, I think, you know, I don't know if we want to take a position on that either as a board or whatever, but I think it's, you know, it has a significant impact on the ability to fund some of our programs. We don't, so, but...
Are we reaching out to our high schools to speak back on that?
Yes. I think the athletic directors have been the first level of contact.
Activities and athletic directors, yes, but weigh in along with the principals.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we get to the consent agenda? All right, next is consent agenda. We have 20 items. We actually have a second consent agenda layer, so first is acceptance of gifts from Lowell Elementary School PTA, acceptance of gifts from Weasberg Elementary School PTA, number three, acceptance of gifts from Monroe Middle School PTA, number four is acceptance of gifts from the Wheaton-Warnable South High School Tiger Paws, number five, approval of the resolution authorizing transfer monies from operations and maintenance fund to capital projects funds, number six, approval of print shop paper bid, number seven, approval of the Xerox paper, Xero graphic bond paper bid, number eight, approval to open previously closed minutes, number nine, approval of the renewal of a long-term disability coverage, number 10, approval of the IASB 2019-2020 annual dues, number 11, approval to increase the paid lunch price, number 12, approval of the CIMS software maintenance and support agreement renewal, number 13, approval of gaggle safety management renewal, number 14, approval of the Microsoft volume licensing agreement renewal, number 15, approval of the Palo Alto firewall subscription services renewal, number 16, approval of Cisco SmartNet HANS renewal, number 17, approval of the electric market contract rate lock, number 18, approval of bill's payable and payroll, number 19, approval of minutes from June 12th, 2019, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to February 2018 as allowable by law, and number 20, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members would like removed from the consent agenda? Any information, Dr. Schuler?
One, I want to make an introduction. So, on the personnel report tonight, the board will be approving the employment of Emily Margis, who will be the new assistant principal at Johnson Elementary School. So, the board has been, I think, kind of following some of our administrative transition, but Emily, we are excited to welcome you to District 200 and Johnson. So, I wanted to welcome Emily. And then, just one quick comment on a number of the items, again, as you read through, especially a number of the technology approval, the subscription approvals. One of the things that I just wanted to comment on, thank Rod and his team for, you will notice that in a lot of those renewals, we're very diligent about making sure that if there is an element of the subscription we don't need anymore because it's, there's a redundancy with another program, that's been stripped back to same cost. The number of these renewals actually showed contract amounts that were going down either just based on negotiation or based on really carefully looking at and pulling out what we don't need. So, that's a lot of Rod and BJ and the tech team that have been looking really closely at that stuff. So, thanks, Rod, really special.
Any other questions? Board members have? Just one really quick comment I have, it's really more of a comment. The first four items, the gifts, I know we now have Board of Education cards for us. Thank you, and I miss my this and brought that up in recent meetings and sent out to our partners. We're going to do that with the PTAs and booster groups of the two high schools.
Yep.
Okay, there's no more questions. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
By Mrs. Erickson?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Matheson. This is... Happy birthday. Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hutchinson, can I have a roll cover?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Consent agenda number two is one item, approval of the resolution designating depositories. Any comments or questions from the board or feedback from Dr. Schuler?
Nothing additional.
Did he want to clarify?
I'll do it.
Okay. So, can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda two as presented?
So moved.
By Mrs. Booton?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I'm staying as a board member of the Wheat Bank Trustee.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
So, consent agenda number two is passed. Next item is a policy posting consent agenda. It's kind of the next step in a long journey we've taken over the past, really, probably over a year or so. So, that agenda items, one, approval to post the revised Press-Wheaton-Warnable Community Unit of District 200 adoption copy of the board policy manual. Can we go through each item one by one?
So, what's been recommended to the board tonight is that you do approve the posting of the revised policy manual, and as Mr. Paulson mentioned, this is really the culmination of quite a bit of work, both by the board, senior leadership team, and the policy committee really working through and making some adjustments. And, again, just a couple of things that they've really kind of got in this process. So, Press, which is put together by the Illinois Association of School Boards, keeps what they call a model policy reference manual. That policy reference manual is fully aligned with the Illinois School Code, and it, through its process, ensures that with each legislative session, I think we were just going through not too long ago, just the bills that were passed in the last legislative session alone that impact schools, and there were like 35 bills, right, that impact schools. A lot of those are not necessarily highly substantive changes, but they are things that impact our process, and we then in turn need to make sure that our policies are aligned with the requirements in school code. And so, we looked, went through policy by policy and looked at the model policy by the Illinois Association of School Boards, compared it to ours, really had a discussion look at our practice. In a lot of circum, in a lot of situations or cases, we may have kept local language because it really reflected our practice, the desire of our community, and in a lot of other cases, we did adjust our policy to bring it in line with the reference manual. And I will say there was definitely a deliberate attempt, and I think the board noted this in a few cases, to truly streamline policy if it was possible to do it. So, I think in a lot of cases, what happens to policy manuals over time is that it's much easier to add to them than it is sometimes to take language away that may have been in place or kind of guided practice at one time. And so, I think in a lot of our policies, there was either just redundant language or kind of additional language that we really wanted to strip out, again, not to change practice necessarily in the school district, but to make sure that our policies really did reflect what we need them to reflect. So, we are pleased this evening to recommend to the board that you do approve this policy manual for posting. Happy to entertain any final questions that they might have. There were a number of questions asked by board members. I think a lot of them really questions of clarification around certain policies that, again, we did go through and answer to make sure, I think, that we addressed any of those questions, but happy to answer anything else that you have tonight.
I just have one comment. Maybe Brad, you could explain this better, but, you know, basically, we, as background, we get our board packet. We review those details. In other words, this is a thick document, okay? And this document, basically, you know, in fact, it's sitting right here, right?
Yeah, it's like 300.
300 pages. So, each board member's had the opportunity to review these, and then, in order to avoid the Open Meetings Act, how do we deal with that? What's the procedure of what we do?
Well, so, first off, thank you to the HR Policy Committee that's been working on this. Ms. Roman was started, I think Ms. Erickson's been on that committee since her first meeting on the board. So, there's been a lot of work at committee level, at board committee level, and I think maybe starting in February or March, we, that committee has brought individual policies that we have at the board page, piece of paper, where we took a first stab and then a few months later, we took another stab at this meeting. So, there's been discussion on policies at this meeting in the public. When, at the last meeting, Dr. Schuler shared with us kind of the adoption copy, there's some new testing policy, the board members have individually reviewed over the last month, and there were some comments that came back just for clarification to Dr. Schuler, from individual board members to Dr. Schuler. We've got those, and other conversations happened with those, and here we're tonight. This agenda item is to post that for public review.
So, the board members submit individual questions to Dr. Schuler. He responds to all of us, so we have clarity on all those, but we're not conversing back and forth at any time.
No.
I just want to clarify that teaching and learning did have some of the policies run through teaching and learning committee, so Dana and I would have been in teaching and learning and discussed those.
Yeah, but two-person committee is not open.
Right, right, but I just want to put that on the record that we did discuss.
I guess I'm trying to get across the point, how much time is spent reading all these documents, you know, and we're going to sit here tonight and, you know, kind of potentially prove this whole thing, you know, there's so much background that happens. It's not, here it is tonight and we're going to, you know, all of a sudden prove it. So, we've had multiple meetings, multiple back and forth, or, you know, questions conveyed to Dr. Schuler, who's then responded to all of us, so we have the same understanding, you know, and then we don't have to, you know, so we don't have to discuss them in open because we're not discussing them in close, or, you know, not open, I guess, say it this way.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we're not really substantially changing our board's policy against some of these problems, policies. We're taking our existing policies, cleaning up some of the language we have in state changes, simplifying them. We're not changing our position as board as it relates to these policies. We do that on occasion, and those get brought up individually over the course of the year. Talking to...
I'll have to take some more to...
So, can you, Dr. Schuler, can you kind of clarify? So, we're moving from the way we've been holding our own policies, we're moving to Press Plus. Can you talk a little bit about what that is and what the benefits that we'll see as well as our community will see if they need to go look at policy?
So, largely, what the community will see are they'll access the policy manual in the same way that it was have. However, when they open up the link to the policy manual, now that it is hosted through Press Plus, there are some significantly enhanced search options within the policy manual. So, as a community member perhaps is searching for a specific policy or a policy relative to a specific topic, they can now kind of type that in and get to it. Within the policy manual, as you go through, there are a lot of like cross-reference links within policies, so one policy will reference two or three others that have a relationship to it or have a legal reference as to what part of the school code that comes from. All of those links now are live links. So, actually, you know, if a community member, staff member, administrator, board member wants to see, well, you know, where does that requirement come from, you'll be able to click on that legal link, go right to the school code and actually see where that comes from. And again, conversely, if it references another policy, you click on that link, it will take you right over to the other policy. So, it, there, just visually, it's going to be much cleaner, but the functionality of the policy manual, I think, will be a lot more user-friendly as well, both for board and community members.
And we have helped with, from IASB to help us, we kind of consult through their process. That's one of the things that we get kind of through our dues. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is it also correct that there's any change in school code and sort of things that they will automatically update our policies?
They, so, our board will still have to act on that change, but what comes to the board in terms of kind of a red-line version of the proposed change will be much cleaner and much easier to navigate. But again, any change in policy, even if we are aligned to the Press policy, our individual board will still have to act on that policy change.
And so, I know that our student handbooks make reference to a lot of these policies. So, when these go live, assuming we approve it, post it tonight, approve it at the August meeting, our handbooks will be kind of referenced to this new policy.
Yeah, and that will be the next round, especially as we go into next year. That'll be the next round of some cleanup within the handbook. There probably are some language changes that will have to get kind of caught up to that, especially in some of the new discipline sections. But again, I want to be clear that there, most of the, most of the changes in this policy manual truly are, I guess, it's just in kind of the semantics of the wording, I think, much more than like the substance of the policy changing.
One question. So, we have a disclaimer in the handbooks, policy always trumps, so it's in the handbook, right? So, should the state make a change in something, it would be reflective, policy as always?
Yeah, because the state always has that option of changing something, and if that happens, we must have the disclaimer that, obviously, the version of our handbook that stays online can change at any point if we need for it to change, and that's the, that is the guiding document, not necessarily what is printed and distributed at the beginning of the year.
I think one other comment I'd like to make is that, you know, tonight we have this item in here, and, you know, I read the section, of course, about the, you know, what is the board's responsibility? What are they supposed to do? You know, one of the biggest things we do as a board is to set policy or approve policy, if that's a better word. And so, we're doing that tonight. We are also responsible to the budget. We're doing that tonight. Sometimes we get questions from the audience or whatever that are real detailed questions. In reality, we as a board don't have, don't maybe know about any of those details because they're, you know, they're outside of the day-to-day operations that we are not technically involved with. You know, some of the questions I heard earlier tonight are, you know, issues that we approved, not in a blanket, but is part of a big-picture negotiation. And, you know, when you, when one selects a piece of something out of, out of a negotiation, you know, that, that could look different than it does on the big-picture of negotiation. So, you know, again, and we deal with the contract approval, but we're looking at the whole gamut of that piece, not an individual section. You know, we may fail to approve a, you know, a certain raise amount, or, you know, it may not be approved if there's some component in there. So, we're, we're giving and taking in those kind of negotiations. So, when I hear about, you know, a citizen being upset about something, you know, that's, that's fine, but I don't know that they always know all the details necessary to make the decision. So, and again, we also approve, you know, the hiring and, you know, the firing for that matter of a superintendent and personnel. So, you know, so much of tonight's agenda really deals with our basic responsibilities, you know, and so, you know, again, we sometimes lose track of what we're supposed to do. This is really, really substantive tonight and important that we have our, our role defined, so.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you for those comments. Anybody else? All right. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the posting of the COSD 200 adoption copy, adoption copy board policy manual as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crabtree. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yeah.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes. So the policy posting consent agenda has passed. Now we will move to action items. We have one action item tonight, which is approval to post the 2019-2020 tentative budget and set the public hearing on the 2019-2020 budget.
Yeah, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Farley. So again, as he's going to go through in terms of the timeline, budget comes to the board, tentative budget comes to the board every year in July, but I think as the board knows, you give authorization to begin the development of the budget back in January. So what's coming to you this evening, obviously, is the culmination of quite a bit of work and, I think, many meetings and pulling these pieces together. And so I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Farley, who's going to walk the board through the tentative budget tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. As mentioned, we do, the budget process is a year-long process, and I have up on the screen the benchmark or kind of key marker points throughout the year of working budget processes in front of the Board of Education as we go through it. I always like to take the opportunity to thank principals, directors, assistant students, and all, everyone that's involved, because the budget is not just me sitting down and putting together a budget, it's working with all the departments, schools, and working through and getting a budget built to a point where we can present it to the Board of Education. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, tonight, we're asking the Board of Education to post the budget. We're also asking you to set the public hearing date. A public notice will appear in the Daily Herald notifying the community of the public hearing. We also will post the budget document online, as well as here at the School Service Center. We also send copies to our public libraries, so there's a hard copy at the Wheaton, Lord ville Winfield and Carroll Street Public Library. There also is an opportunity to, for comments, if at the libraries could be made, we always come, relay that around and get responses in case there are any from the libraries as well. I'm going to start with just a little bit of history as we go through the budget. I don't know if we want to cut the lights off, it's going to hurt to see it. A little glory yet, maybe it's my eyes, but I just wanted to share a little bit with the Board of Education as to our, a little bit of history relative to our operations. And what the first slide here is to show you an illustration of our operational revenues. This is from our annual financial report documents, and you'll notice over time, the green bar is the, is our obviously largest source of revenue, which is our property taxes. The red is other local revenue. Orange is general state aid. The light blue is other state sources. Dark blue is federal sources, and then flow-through, which there is really no flow-through sources. But you'll notice over time, that bar has gone up. There have been some ups and downs as you look at the different line items. This is when funds were actually received, so you know anything that's coming from the state, especially in the range of categorical funding. It was kind of hit or miss over time, where we had years where the payments were not timely, and the state has done a better job of catching up. Just for point of reference, this year, we did receive four payments. We received one payment in September, that was for last year, and we received the first three payments for this year. That was as of the end of June 30th, so on a cash basis, we did receive four payments, albeit one from the prior year and three from the current year. We'll wait and see what happens with that fourth payment, if we'll get it in the next 60 days, which by board policy would be recognized in our audit as we do an audit on an accrual basis, not a cash basis. So we'll wait and see what happens there. I think the other thing, just want to point out on this chart, if you look at 2018, you'll see that the general state aid, or what is now the general state aid evidence-based funding amount went up considerably. That was through the consolidation and hold harmless of a lot of the categorical funding. As board is aware, our categorical funds are now down to basically transportation, regular ed, special ed, and special ed tuition are the three big ones. We do get some other smaller categorical money, like driver's ed, but for the most part, those cats have weaned down. So as you, as you, if you're looking as a basis of comparison, you'll see that the orange bar is now bigger as it's the evidence-based funding, which includes a lot of categoricals that were collapsed. I mentioned evidence-based funding, and the board probably recalls this chart, but we wanted to share it. Again, we shared it at our town hall meetings. This is an illustration of our benchmark districts and the evidence-based funding for each school district that we consider our benchmarks. Again, I think it's worth pointing out that each district has an adequacy target that is set based on the enrollment in the school district, the population of the school district, and the unique makeup of each school district. If you look at this chart, we are in tier two. The yellow bar illustrates, or excuse me, tier three, that yellow bar illustrates that we are a tier three school district. It also gives, identifies that as a school district, our adequacy target is the highest, which means the needs for our population are the highest of all of our benchmarks. The black line illustrates where the funding level is, and you'll see that we're about 90, just under 92 percent, so we're in that tier three marker. But again, we are, by the state's own formula here, we are the most neediest as far as the amount of funds that we should be needing to reach our adequacy target. So again, we are in tier three. Indian Prairie's the only one in tier two, but their need is less than ours based on that. And you'll see some school districts do actually go beyond, their funding goes beyond what their target level should be.
Before you do that page, what does that mean, neediest? What does that mean?
Just the makeup of our population, be it low-income, bilingual, there's 24 or 25 different markers that they use for the evidence-based funding to look at what the needs of the school district are and how we're staffed, and all of those factors are taken into account. So based on what our student population is, we have the greatest need of our benchmarks based on our student population.
Meaning such as we have the highest in the low-income segment of our peer group? Is that, I mean, that's the neediest? Is that one of the bigger defines?
That's one of the bigger defines, the adult population. There's a number of different factors. Again, there's 24 total, but those are some of the biggest ones as they look at the overall adequacy target for each school district.
And what does tier three mean?
Tier three means we're between 90 percent and 100 percent of the adequacy target for our funding level as identified by the state of Illinois. If we're under 90, we would be in tier two, which means there would maybe be more, or there would be more funding available for us as a school district, because they fund, the state each year has allocated a little over $300 million, and they have to put it in the state budget for this year. And that money is appropriated out based with more money going to tier, you know, one and two school districts. Tier three gets a smaller portion of the pot, so we don't get as much. We get, I think we've averaged a little over $300,000 the last couple of years during this, using this model, but if you slid it into tier two, we'd probably be seeing more funds available. So we're kind of right on that cusp. If you recall, when the target came out, we were 90.2 or 3. We were right on the cusp, but it's gone up a little bit. So that just is an identifier of what our availability of the pot of money that's set aside for tier three school districts are.
Do we know what that would generate if we were tier two?
I don't.
It's a big number?
It's probably not a big number. It's probably somewhere between, I think, Indian Prairie gets $700,000 or $800,000 of tier funding, so probably somewhere between the $300,000 we get, it would probably be, you know.
Potential.
Yeah, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars or more, potentially. I'm going to flip over now to operational expenses, the last five years, and you can see again, our, the blue is the salaries, the orange is our employee benefits, green is purchase services, purple is supply materials, cab lot is tan, light blue is other objects, non-capital is red, and then the light pink is the termination benefits. You can see over time that the blue is our salary and has stayed pretty static as you look at it over the last five years. We did have a spike in benefits in 2017 with the run out of our former plan before we joined the co-op. You'll also see in 17, we spent, had more capital spending as we were increasing our capital spend. And, but overall, we've, you know, we had that bump up in 17, but stayed pretty flat going into, it actually went down, I think, a little, our spending went down in 2018, even as we move forward.
Just to be clear, this is 2018, so this is not the year that just ended, it's the year that ended a year ago.
Correct.
And we don't have numbers for this year because they're subject to the audit at this point.
Correct.
And just to be clear on that termination benefit one, I mean, basically in '14, '15, '16, I can't, I don't see a bar even there for it, or it's so small. And then 17, it was higher, and then it dropped down in '18. Can you explain that a little bit?
It is really just a function of when people leave, or how many people are leaving the district, and what benefits are available to them, you know, use vacation days or post employment or any of those factors. So it really is dependent on the class that's retiring that year and if they, you have to, you know, for 12 months, if they have vacation days to turn in, or, you know, this is just so deal, or, you know, any.
Or.
Employees.
End of career bonus would be in that number?
Post-employment would be in there as well, yes.
Okay, so in the big picture, that's kind of a small number, I guess.
Correct. Switching to the next slide, again, another slide I think the board is familiar with this. Again, using our benchmarks, this is our operating expense per pupil for the audit for 2018. And you can see that as a school district, ours is at $13,546, which is below the average of our benchmarks. I'll also believe that will be below the state average as well. They haven't published that number, as we'll get that in October. They lag behind with that information, but as you look at our benchmark school districts, we're below the average and second lowest of the group. So again, our spending per student and our operating expense per pupil continues to stay low, pretty much held that position. Is that also based on the 2017, 2018? Correct. Correct. Yeah, we will not have, so this won't have this information until the end of Congress.
So to be clear, we are less than the state average, whether it's Southern Illinois or, you know, and there's, isn't Southern Illinois' compensation per teacher a lot lower than it is?
Correct.
Chicago market?
Yes.
We're still lower than the average, which would include all the downstate and...
Again, the state hasn't published a number for last year, for, no, two years ago, I guess it does now because of the fiscal year just ended, June 30th, but this is for that previous, the 17, 18 school year. They haven't published. We don't get until the state report card comes out, October 31st, we probably won't have that exact number. We are below the average for our benchmarks, and we assume we will continue to be below the state average, which we've been for a number of years.
We are quite, you know, I mean, significantly under, I mean, you know, it's per student, that's a pretty big number.
It is.
Okay.
So now that's the, just the history I wanted to share with the board. Now I'm going to jump into some of the budget highlights for this year, I'm going to run through the revenues and then the expenditures. The 2018 CPI was released in January, incorporated into our five-year plan, and towards the where it came in at 1.9 percent. That was after a couple of years at 2.1 percent. So the CPI has stayed pretty static. I think as, they haven't released the number yet for June yet, that'll come out here in a week, but the May number was 1.8 percent. So the CPI has stayed relatively flat over the last couple of years, as well as we track it this year, which we do on a monthly basis. Tax levy distributions in DuPage County continue to be good as far as the collection percentage, and when those funds are released, they did release a small amount in May of this year, which, if you recall back, the prior year when the tax laws changed, there was a lot of prepayment going on, and so they released funds at a large amount in May to all the school districts and other taxing bodies. Obviously, that tax impact has gone away now, so we're not seeing quite the prepayment that we saw before, but there was some funds released. Corporate personal property replacement tax, that number is, we have budgeted based on what we received this year. We did receive more than we budgeted. We always are relatively conservative with that, because that number fluctuates, but we spread those funds across our education and IMRF Social Security Fund. We are required to put a percentage in the IMRF fund, so that's why that fund carries some of that revenue. Interest earnings is another interesting revenue line item. We far exceeded our estimates for this year as far as interest earnings. Credit to Kim Funkhauer, the Controller of the Treasurer, who does all the investing. We did see interest rates start to come up, and that in turn resulted in good rates of return on our investments. However, we all, if you've watched the news, the president is pushing hard on the Fed to reduce the interest rates, and we may see that start to impact us. So we've tried to stay conservative while understanding that we, as we build fund balances and as, you know, we're working to invest that money prudently, there may be some reduction over what we received this year. So we have budgeted accordingly throughout the funds, we've taken into account that the transfer the board approved tonight, that's in the budget as well from, we're spending the $3 million for capital projects out of that capital projects fund. So we'll continue to monitor the interest earnings, we've said in a few webinars, about what the prognosticators think is going to happen as far as reductions. But just as you look at what we received this year and what we've budgeted going into next year, we have taken into account that there could be some reductions. State funding, the general state aid or the evidence-based funding, as it's now called, it's called both actually, I think the state form still hasn't changed it. We do have fun, have spread that out over the ed fund. We have an allocation of the own aid fund, as well as to the bond and interest fund, which is the lease payment for the only childhood center. Last year, we budgeted a million. This year, I think we budgeted 950, a little over $950,000 is the lease payments there to match up with the lease payments as we move forward. So that evidence-based money is spread across three different funds, so when you look at our overall allocation, it changes a little bit from year to year in each fund, so as we've spread that money out. I mentioned earlier the categorical money, special ed, tuition, driver's ed, and transportation are the big three that are really left out there, and we've budgeted those based on current year allocations and have kept it relatively flat, even though we've seen some, obviously, some increases in transportation costs as we move forward. Title one funding, the national school lunch program. As the board recalls, we pulled the high schools off the program, so we reduced the amount of national school lunch funding we believe we'll receive based on the high schools being off the program. And we've been working with Faith and Melissa, title one funding, and looked at idea and medication funded that based on what we believe to receive moving forward. Do you have a question, Jim?
I've got a number of my, we have to.
Okay. So that's revenues. Moving on to expenditures, you'll see salary and benefits. We've got the teachers in at the, this is based on a blended CPI with the minimum, and so we based it on that minimum of 2.5 percent. Classified staff have a similar contractual arrangement, their minimum is 2 percent. Administrators and non-union are 2 percent. Again, it's great to mention that our benefits, our health insurance benefits, the decision by the Board of Education to join the NIA cooperative has been an excellent move as we've, I still don't believe we're at the rates we were three years ago, and I think we're still under that. And this year, we were able to go in with a flat renewal for our Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO, our HMO and dental actually went down. So we are, as we've gone through open enrollment, seeing more and more folks flocking over to the HMO, which is good, good for the employees. I'm one that did that, and it's been great. And we're seeing a lot of, you know, as far as the premium being less than us, the cost to the Board of Education. So again, that move to the cooperative has been very beneficial for the board and a great move over there. We've enjoyed the benefits that being in that cooperative have offered as well. Just want to touch base on the TRS Fed. That rate is at 10.66 for this year. You recall that used to be up in the 40s. The state finally made the change, moved it back to a more reasonable number for any of our federal grants that we pay certified staff out of, the cost is 10.66 percent. Again, they were, that was in the 40s not too long ago, so that number continues to stay down, which is great. We also, while it's not included in this budget book we give to you today, when we do the final budget, we are required to put an on-behalf payment that the state makes for TRS for the towards the pensions. It's nothing that goes through our books, but we posted it in the state form as a revenue in, expenditure out. It's basically just a washroom as far as state, the state costs for TRS for on behalf. It's a yes. We always... a washroom as far as state, the state cost for TRS for, on behalf, it's a yes, we always, you know, it goes up and down, it does crazy things, but we do our best to try and put the accurate number in there. I M R F pension fund, this fund is, this percentage, the district percentage is changing to ten point nine nine from nine point oh two. It is a, an increase, they've reduced their overall anticipation of investment earnings, so they raised the collection rate a little bit. This doesn't go into effect until January first of each year though, so it's kind of a blended impact. We are seeing reductions in our I M R F salaries as we have custodials that, custodians that have retired over time and had some reduction in our eight paid groups, so the impact of this isn't that great. We, we'll talk a little bit more as we get into the I M R F fund. Just some highlights of some purchases that the, we've got in our, as far as our purchase services, supplies and capital, tuition. In the curriculum area, we've got the textbooks is our largest budget line item, and we've got, I think there's some English, high school English renewals that are as part of that. Chris has talked a lot about S E L and some of the things he's doing in that budget. And then we've got the E A D program, which the board approved at the last meeting. We're in regards to safety, and Charlie's going to talk a little bit about it later. I'll not go into great detail, but the ALICE program, that's included in the budget, some of the training and costs of incorporating that program, safety program into our school district is included. Technology, we've got the business HR software, which has finally reached fruition, and we're looking forward to that conversion process. And switching over, InformaCast, which I think the board previously approved, Rod's working on laptop and Chromebook leases, and we've got some big network equipment that's, we do get some e-rate funding from the federal government to back on, so those are all items the board has approved. Our three outsourced contracts, we've included, obviously, in the budget, we have food service, which will change as we bid that out, and so you'll see some increases there as the rate did go up through the bid process. Custodial was renewed at CPI, and transportation, we bid out, and I believe that went up at around six percent, so, so that is all incorporated into the budget as well. Electricity, we came in under budget this year, credit to J R and Colin and the hard work they did. Natural gas with the winter we had, I think we came in just slightly over budget, but all things considered, as brutal as the winter was, we came, we had lowered that budget and it's still, I think, pretty was pretty close to target. The other utilities are sanitation, phone and water. Tuition, our outplace students, we've budgeted it based on the information from the special ed department, and that number's going up a little bit, but our number, our, you know, the costs of each year do go up, I don't believe our overall head count is always going up at all, so, you know, that's a good thing. And then finally, our lease payment for the early childhood center is included in the bond and interest fund, and we talked about the revenue source to offset that cost. Dr. Schuler also talked to briefly about the twenty-two days that J R and I were thinking about workdays that are left.
Change your page.
You can see the, oops, sorry, you can see that, you can see that the roofing is in full gear, I feel very sorry for those roofers right now with the ninety-degree-plus temperatures, it's very warm and I don't envy the work, hard work they're doing on the roofs, but they've made great progress. Bauer, just as a refresher, Bauer is being completely re-roofed, Lincoln's probably ninety percent of that building is being totally re-roofed. Pleasant Hills having some gutter and other work done. We're putting some snow guards up there on that roof, if you're familiar, that's a kind of a different roof, so that's getting done, and then we've got some areas at each of the high schools that we're attending to. So that, that work is in full gear and been moving forward pretty well. Another item we've got going at quite a number of schools is our doors, a number of doors, and these are mostly exterior doors, and there, it's been very important, as we talk about safety and other things, that these doors be replaced, and so we've, our contractor's been doing a great, great, great job getting all of these doors attended to, and most of them are either in or delivered, and we're hoping to see that, we don't anticipate that being any type of issue. Flooring, they are moving very fast as well, we're very excited to see, very excited to see the work that's going on at Pleasant Hill, that the school was built in nineteen ninety-four, the carpet was original to the building, and it has now been all pulled out, and the L B T is going back in, and the building looks great, so they're making great progress there. Lola's getting a large portion of the building, final refloor as well with L B T Sandberg is done in the new area, or I call it new, it's probably from two thousand and one, towards the back of the school by the art music room and some couple of classrooms, so that's done, and then when you're at music room, it's a music room, right, was completed as well. So, and we also have chiller work going on at Sandberg and Franklin, that's going, while I think the equipment's being delivered here soon. Erica has also done a great job of posting out information about these projects, be it live video with Colin or on Facebook lineup. Posting a lot of that information and pictures as well as, the boards get their reports on the early childhood center, and the drone videos are great to see as well, and you get a bird's eye view of what's going on in the project, and we're seeing the walls going up, so things will start moving up pretty quickly, so. So that's the, on the expenditure side, are there any questions on any other one of those?
I have a couple. Just to be clear, when I look at the revenue page, page is down, we're getting about one point nine percent increase in, let me go back even more step further. What is the current year, I know the audit is not complete, but do we expect that operationally we will be a plus or a minus?
Should be a plus.
Okay. Ballpark number?
On an accrual basis, it's always difficult.
Yeah.
And we don't know if we'll get that, get the payment.
Well, cash should be pretty close because we're on the same, four, four state payments, four state payments this year, right?
Right. Yeah, so we should be, yeah, we anticipate that we'll come in under, on our budgeted expenditures and over on our revenues.
Okay, so we may add a little to fund balance, not a lot?
Right.
Not a lot?
We'll see.
Okay, all right, number one. Number two then, when you do the budget, you're doing this, you know, you're talking about here, you're increasing two point five percent or two, well, some of those are, again, compensation based on real numbers, but let's say on the supplies, are you basing that on the actual expenditures we had in the current year, or are you talking about, are you developing from the prior year's budget, which may or may not be the same, which will not be?
It's a combination of both, because we're also working with departments and, you know, grants drive a lot of the costs that we spend in budget, so we're working with departments and it's a kind of combination of zero-based and, and looking at, you know, how we spend historically.
Okay, so then the big question is, when revenues go up one point nine percent, okay, and, and, you know, compensation goes up two point five, and so on, somewhere that doesn't work. And in addition, we've got, you know, the lease payment this year, which is a million dollars or thereabouts, that wasn't in the prior budget numbers, and that's coming out of tax money in effect. So where are we, where are we getting that savings, I guess, to make operational, you know, to offset the two point five versus two point, you know, one point nine, and then to fund that one million dollars worth?
In this budget, you know, as you look at the CPI with the one point nine percent increase, that'll be part of the levy coming up in November, you also remember, we also generate usually almost another percent in new growth, so the new, new construction on that tax levy also factors into...
That's how many dollars?
Every, every percent is probably about one point four million.
Okay. So that could pay for the early learning center lease payment?
Yeah, we, I mean, we've, the board's chosen to, or we recommended that we use the evidence-based funding, that's been going up, as I mentioned, about three hundred thousand a year, so that's also incorporated into the budget.
Are we in a full year with the Amazon property yet?
Yeah, they've got their full year, and we made our, the taxes reduced by the first payment, which is actually a little, they did actually a little bit more than half, so it's, it's, so the second payment will come out of the next tax year, and it's, obviously it would be less than half now because we made a little bit better production based on the percentage and the amount.
Okay. Okay, so when I look at the Forecast Five document, we're projecting basically a break-even operationally, with these, even though we're seeing that one point nine coming in and two point five in fact going out, some of the other savings are offset to get us back to what we'll call a zero, a zero funding, or a zero-based budget above, you know, that we will not, revenues will approximate expenditures.
Yes.
Okay, and that's in there, so, okay. Now, one other thing that's in here, we talked about in the second page or third page, you talked about the summer projects of seven point two million of old O and B and capital projects fund. Some of that, that's the Sherman Durges, in effect, funding, that was our target number, give or take. Some of that's coming from fund balance, some of it's coming from operations, okay? How much in this budget for twenty, two thousand twenty, twenty, nineteen twenty is going to be what I'll call operational funding of that seven, eight million dollars?
Four point two million.
Okay, so we will be eroding, give or take, three or four million dollars of fund balance, okay?
Three nine.
Out of that, okay? And then as time goes on, that will, will be, well, fund balance will start to diminish, and so it's going to be, if we continue that program, which we're committed to do, that eight million will be funded out of, out of operations.
Right.
And that again is in our Forecast Five funding.
Yeah, we'll step up the amount we're contributing operationally to the cost of...
If we can, or whatever we have to modify to make that happen.
Right.
So that's consistent with what we discussed earlier in the, both Forecast Five as well as the Sherman Durges discussions and so on.
Right.
All right.
Next, I'm going to just run through a little visual presentation of each of the funds in the school districts. First chart just shows you an illustration of the hundred and forty-seven million dollars, hundred and forty-seven million dollars of the education fund. You, just a breakdown of the overall revenue, where the revenues are coming from, and you notice, obviously, property tax is the largest contributor with other local, about eighty-five percent of our revenue stream, and the education fund is coming from, is coming from a, from the local share, local revenue. Eight percent is that evidence-based funding, with other state being about two percent, and then federal makes up about five percent. Education fund, again, is our largest fund of the school district, pays for the majority, and we'll talk a little bit about where that money's spent. But you can see, and it's also the only federal money, it's the only time, and only fund, the education fund's the only fund that receives federal revenue. Switching over to the expenditure side, hundred and forty-seven million again, the fund is balanced, and you'll see that the overall cost of the, in the education fund, salaries and benefits make up about eighty-five percent of the education fund. That is not an uncommon percentage for any school district probably across the state as spending goes, and then you see purchase services, supplies, capital and other objects make up the rest of that budget. Moving over to operations and maintenance revenue, this is, we're up to about fifteen million now, as we allocate more funding towards the O and M fund as we increase that capital spending. I should mention, as we, we are increasing the capital spend, but I'm still kneeling on J R pretty hard on the rest of his budget to try and keep those costs down and the expenditures down as far as overall costs as we increase the capital spend. But you'll see ninety percent of our money and the proceeds come from property tax, three percent from other local. We do, as I mentioned earlier, some of that evidence-based funding or general state is also included in there, and then we have some other state revenues, some grants that we've applied for, and we hope to get the state as part of their overall budget, is also talked about putting back in the fifty thousand dollar state maintenance grant, which districts can apply for, so we're hopeful between that, if that gets enacted, as well as some grants that we've applied for state, for safety, some safety projects in the district, we will, that makes up that other state revenue that we get from the O and M fund. On the expenditure side, this is probably the brightest part chart, or fine chart of the group. You can see that salaries and benefits only makes up nineteen percent of our overall budget. Benefit costs have gone down in this group as well as the salaries, and some of that has to do with retirements, again, as the board recalls. The majority of J R's staff is outsourced, we outsource with A B M, our outsourced custodial group, so as our staff retires or leaves the school district, they are backfilled with A B M staff, so it does have an impact on our purchase services, but it, the cost, again, through, through that attrition, there is savings to the school district, so, so the salary benefits makes up about nineteen percent, purchase services is thirty-three percent, supplies nineteen percent, and that capital percentage is now twenty-nine percent. You'll see, obviously, see that continue to grow as we move forward. And overall, revenue and expenditures are just over fifteen million in both, and this fund is also balanced. Moving on to debt services, obviously, majority of it is property taxes at purple bar, the evidence-based funding, again, is the general state or evidence-based that we put towards the lease payment, and then there's a very small interest earnings in this fund as well, but the revenues are just over twenty-one million. And then if you switch over to, our expenditures is all payment, payments for the lease and for principal and interest on our bond debt.
Just to be clear on that, the evidence-funding money that's going in the, the debt service money would have been otherwise in the educational fund in the past, so this is the first year we've ever allocated any kind of state aid into this fund.
Second year.
Second year, okay. And, and then that's the money, so it's about five percent, twenty-one million, so it's a million dollars, give or take, and that's the money that will then make the early learning center piece, a payment.
Correct.
So in effect, we're using state aid money to make that payment, that would have otherwise been in this, in the educational fund.
Correct. Okay, good clarification, this, this ninety-five percent property taxes, the revenue, that, that's the money that you take in outside of our tax operating budget, right?
That's the one that tax, the collector levies automatically based on bonds that are passed.
Right, so our operating budgets that fit within P T L, right, that go up by CPI basically.
Correct.
This big green, ninety-five percent here is the money to pay our bond and interest payment for that individual year.
Correct. And it could have gone up, it could have doubled in theory, that's what we did when we refinanced, that we kept this level. You know, had we not refinanced all this stuff, that number would have gone from, say, twenty million to thirty million in some period of time, so that would have been a significant impact on taxation outside of what we'll call the opera.
So in a sense, that, that number, that ninety-five percent was approved by the community?
Yes.
You know, paid for individual bond issues as a whole.
Yep. That we've refinanced to make it better than it was before, and what, we say, eight million dollars?
Nine.
Over cycle nine, eight?
Almost, I believe.
Ten, I think. Ten.
And the debt services fund is, obviously, there's actually a little bit of a positive balance of interest earnings. Moving on to the transportation fund, you see about fifty-six percent is property taxes, the rest comes from state revenue, there's some small other local one percent with our space available bus program. Again, the state percentage has gone up over time, we used to receive less in reimbursement, but they've increased the amount that they're reimbursing for transportation, which is good. Or a few years ago, our collection on, I think, our regular transportation was about two hundred thousand, this year we're up around a million. So that funding obviously has been beneficial, especially as we've seen contract renewals and, you know, every time I talk to the bus company, they're talking about having to raise driver, driver salaries because they're trying to keep their, you know, going up against each other, so their recruitment's up, especially good economy to find bus drivers, so they're, they're paying twenty, twenty-one dollars an hour now, and then filled with bonuses and everything else, so obviously we can bid this out of about six percent. I think they had originally talked to us about a ten percent increase for renewal, and so when we bid it out competitively, we got, it was good competitive bid, price, you know, percentage increase is still high, but we're, you know, we continue to work to find ways to streamline and hopefully reduce the number of buses we have to roll.
Have we considered the new gas price, particularly the gas price tax in our budget for next year, and if so, doesn't that get modified if...
There's a fuel, there's a fuel escalator, and remember, buses, most, majority of them run diesel, so diesel's a different rate as well, so we pay more attention to the diesel rate than we do the regular rate when we look at it. Diesel's been high, it's stayed high even as regular gasoline's gone down, so yes, we have increased the fuel escalator cost, which is a...
That's considered as well.
Yeah.
What is the tax on, on diesel, is it different than the...
No, it's, it's not different, it's just the price of diesel has been higher.
It's a little less, yeah.
So, but you can see the majority, as you look at our overall cost, the majority is purchase services, which is the price of money from us. The budget is ninety point eight million, revenues are nine point eight million, so this fund is also balanced. Moving on to the I M R F fund, you can see the majority of that is property taxes and other local is just that C P P R T, you know, corporate personal property. We're required to put a percentage into the I M R F fund, so that's... We're required to put a percentage into the IMRF fund, so that's, that blue bar is, that's the majority of the funding. There is some other local for interest earnings as well, so that's about 3.7 million in revenues. Expenditures, the whole fund is, in fact, considered a benefit, so the 3.7 million in benefits, there's no other costs that are expenditures that are in that fund, so it's not a question of benefits.
That's gone down, right? That's what you said.
That's continued to go down. We were, we actually came in well under budget this year, so, and while that rate has gone up that I mentioned earlier, we still have seen that go down to total cost, so.
Who's the employees that are covered under IMRF?
Non-certified staff that work over 600 hours. They work over that 600, or even if they're part-time, they, their job tells that they work more than 600 dollars a year, and they are, they pay at IMRF, the employee contributions 4.5%. Ours right now is at 9.22, and it's going to go up to 10.99.
Now, the state, that part is funded better than the teacher retirement?
Yeah, I think IMRF is probably funded over 90% of it, because it's incumbent on local school boards and employees who are good about paying their contributions and investment earnings, whereas the state has no contribution towards IMRF, so it's almost a fully funded.
So we talk about the pension crisis, this is not a component of it.
Not of IMRF. Moving on to the capital projects fund, we have about 70,000 of interest earnings booked into this fund. We also have approved a $3 million transfer from the O and M fund for the projects, you know, 4.2 again in the operation and maintenance fund, and 3 million transferred into the capital projects fund for this work. We have 13 million in expenditures, 10 million obviously is the number that we received. We asked our construction manager to update the cash flow analysis for this fiscal year. We believe we'll have about 10 million expenditures this fiscal year towards the early learning center, and the remaining 3 million is for the capital work that JR is completing those capital projects. And then finally, the last.
Before you do that, we're going to report those in our financial statements.
Yes.
That was the discussion we had when we, because in theory, it's escrow money from the bond sale, right?
Yes.
From the lease sale, I guess.
And the money sits in an escrow, anytime we, payment comes out of it, we have to put in forms to the escrow agent who makes the direct payment to the vendor, majority of it goes to, obviously, our construction manager, because they hold the contracts for all the project, and then the architects, so those go right out, but we do track those in our.
So they will be in our financials, therefore, we review them, or you review them as part of your plan.
So really, the only revenue that's happening in this fund this year is just interest earnings that we anticipate. All, you know, obviously, we received the lease certificate funds last year, so this fund looks out of balance because of when the, you know, the lease certificates were issued, and the amount of work we're doing this year is an expenditure. So this fund will look, again, it's hit out of balance, but it's only because of the timing issue, so just, I want to point that out as I move on through to the presentation. And finally, working cash fund, we have 400,000 revenue associated with anticipated interest earnings, around 28 million dollars in our working cash funds, and that is obviously invested. We look at cash flows and invest that to times when we need. You do those transfers that we do in the spring each year. So when you look at our overall revenue by source, you can see that we have about 197 million in total revenues, and again, this is all funds from the school district, doesn't include the refunding that we just did, that we closed on in early July. You'll see we have about 197 million dollars in total revenue, with the majority of that coming from local. Even if this breaks it down by all funds, you can see the source of that, those funds overall for the school district, and obviously, 81% is property taxes, with 5% being other local, and about 10% of state money, and 4% of federal. Now going down to operating, now, this excludes debt services and the capital projects fund, because that's not part of our operating budget. Our overall revenues are about 176 million dollars, a little over 176 million dollars. Again, similar chart, you can see our overall revenues, where the source of those revenues is for our operating funds, again, the majority, 85% is that property taxes and other local, with 11% from state and 4% of federal. So can you just clarify, I always think about this every year, so we showed total revenues of 197 million, and expenditures of 176. What's the delta? Well, you're looking at all funds versus operating funds. I'm just going through revenues. I showed you all funds, and I showed you operating. So I'll have a chart that'll show, that'll compare all. Again, moving over to expenditures by all types, and the overall for all funds, again, and this does not include refunding, it's about 209 million. Again, that delta between 197 million and 209 is really the capital projects fund, it's not in the operating balance, it's just that we've got 13 million dollars of expenditures in, you know, in the capital projects fund. The 3 million or transfer doesn't count as revenue, and the lease certificate proceeds for last year, so it looks like it's, you know, it's out of balance, but it's really just the way that fund operates because of the timing of when the revenues are received and when the projects are done. So, so 209 million in total.
The primary difference there is the lease payment, is the early learning payment.
Yes.
Because we had received that in the prior year, it was part of fund balance, in effect. Okay? And we're going to expend that substantially this year, and that's what that primary difference is. Plus, we're using 3 or 4 million dollars from fund balance, which was also part of it.
Correct, and it doesn't count as a revenue. So you say we received the money from the lease payment?
Lease certificate.
We received the money for the lease certificates.
In 19.
As now by the escrow agent, who we're showing that is in our, we're showing the expenditure.
We got the money last fiscal year, so the 18 year, and then we're going to expend it, or, yeah.
We'll be, we'll be expending over probably three fiscal years at least, anyhow, on this project, so.
So that would have been, you know, expected deficiency, if you want to call it that, between the two, and the other is the consumption of the fund balance into the Sherman Dirges. That's.
And if you look at last year's budget as well, when we, when we approved the budget, we were, you know, it was around that time we were having to go out, you know, the project got delayed, we had budgeted as if the project was going to move forward before it got, you know, in August before it got delayed, so it showed a variance in the master as well, that we thought we'd be spending more just towards the project with the construction timeline. And then this, just again, just a chart that shows where, you know, allocation by object of all funds, where we're spending percentage-wise, where we're spending overall. But again, when you do all funds, the salary and benefit percentage goes down because here, obviously, we have a lot more, you know, we're in capital spend and such, so. This, and this is the slide I think Mr. Paulson you were referring to. So when you look at our all-fund summary, we have expenditures a little over 209 million, and it's revenues are 197, and really, that difference, as you look at that, is basically the construction work that goes in. We don't include the refunding, does not include any, you know, $3 million transfer as revenue, because it's not a revenue, it's just a transfer. So really, that operating balance difference is attributable to the 13 million dollars with the work, plus some positive balances in a couple other funds. Can you clarify what you mean by, does that include the refunding? Just the? I can know what it means, but. Yeah, we've obviously got a refunding that went on, that we're paying down and putting money into escrow, and then paying down the bonds, and it's just that, that, that cost of revenue stream is not factored into the overall all-funds budget summary. So in a sense, we take in the revenue from the bonds that we sold to pay off the bonds, retire, retire, it hasn't, haven't hit that date yet, then we can retire those existing bonds.
Or there may be a term over the life, but it, it really is, we really have no access to those dollars anymore, and they're there to pay off the prior ones.
This next chart just shows, again, for all funds, it shows a breakdown of the different funds and how much as a percentage is in each fund. Obviously, we talked about the education fund, the workers fund of the school district. The next chart is just expenditures for all fund, you can see, again, 70% of our expenditures are in the education fund in the school district. The next chart, and the next slide, really, this is our operating budget, this is the budget of the school district. So as I went through each of the different funds, I talked about how each of the funds were balanced. So our operating, again, this does not include debt services or the capital projects fund. Our revenues are 170, a little over 176 million, our expenditures are under 175 million. All the funds are basically balanced, the difference, that 400,000 dollar difference is our working cash interest earnings. So overall, the operating funds of the school district, and the operating budget, the budget we submit to the state, which does include debt service and capital project, but our operating budget will be balanced. And that's like 10th consecutive? 10th consecutive year.
Bill, can you go back two slides, I think, one more, sorry. So, just for clarity, that's really not the operating balance then, so when we're showing a 12 million dollar deficit, I mean, that's really the all-funds?
It's the all-funds operating budget, it's, yeah. We can change that to the, the term.
Might be good, I just don't want to confuse people with, like, you know, sees operating balance and thinks we're running a 12 million dollar deficit.
Right. Yeah, we can change the.
I don't just like to see it being, you know, on the box, showing that it's the consumption of the prior year's capital, you know, lease certificate, and fund balance consumption as planned under Sherman Dirges. You know, that way it clarifies.
Sure. We can change that.
What is, this document, I'm sorry, this document that was in the, in our, in the board pack, is that a public document?
Yes.
Okay. The last page, the very last page, I just want to comment on that a little bit, but I think that, you know, there's a date in there that's wrong, that's not a big deal, but it's showing the 18, okay. But it's, it's confusing to me, I guess it's showing the 19, but no, the one on the bottom is 20.
Correct.
So that's the one really we're going to post now.
Yes.
Okay. That's showing, and I'm confused by, it says bond, lease certificate, 172,000. I don't understand, it's out of the bond and interest.
Those are the fees associated with the refunding. We listed that separate, we list that separate, we had it budgeted last year as well.
Is that a, I wish we could call it a fee or something.
Yeah.
Because it's confusing when you talk about lease certificate.
Right.
You know, that implies to me that's the early learning center, and that number isn't. And the early learning center payment is, is where? It's in the bond and interest?
It's in the bond, if you go into the bond and interest fund in page 11, it's a separate line item, it's 951,700 dollars.
Okay. Oh, okay, it's back.
Yeah, it's back in page 11.
So that, according to this, I mean, we're showing that same 12 million dollars change that you just put up there, or it was just up there, and that primarily is that $3 million transfer, if you're calling it that, out of the O and M fund on that page, from fund balance? And the other is the expenditure of the early learning center dollars that we had received that were in escrow?
Yeah, we basically have 13 million dollars of expenditures with really not an offsetting revenue because of the transfer as well, as late, the lease certificates being received last year, basically.
One other item on here, and I don't want to go into it now, but, you know, I think there's a lot of other options that we've done in here, you know, we may have put corporate replacement tax money in this fund versus that fund. I discussed this with Dr. Schuler, and I'd like to have a finance committee to kind of drill down on some of these, particularly where there's options of how monies can be placed and so on. It'd be helpful to our new finance committee, I'll call it, so, and I think it'd be good. So if we can schedule something like that. And I don't expect it to change the budget, but at least it's a better understanding for the, you know, the committee, I'll call it.
Sure. I think this is our last slide. This just shows you our operating budget comparison between, from this current, the fiscal year that just ended, June 30, compared to the FY '20 budget, and you'll see that overall, our overall operating revenue increased by 2.64% and our overall expenditures were 2.65. So we see pretty close. I think we had a larger fund, our operating balance last year, but again, this is all funds other than debt service and capital projects. And one other thing, this budget document, especially for probably the new board members, we put it in this format for the posting, just, it's in much simpler form. There is a budget form document that we fill out that the State Board of Education wants us to fill out and include, and that's what we will ask you to approve. That is not very user-friendly to look at it and try and understand, so, like a lot of districts, we put out a document that hopefully makes it a little bit easier to read through and understand and break down by funds, and we, again, we will ask you to approve the final ISB budget form document in September. We have, that's what we have submitted, the board has to approve, but this is posted again for more user-friendliness. I look forward to reading that document again.
Just to be clear, the Forecast Five document that we did back in February, you know, basically, the, you know, for the fiscal year 2020, which is the year we're talking about here, these are very consistent numbers with that. In that case, the total operating, I think, revenues were 172 million, and this is 176 million. Or is this the?
Oh, the one difference of this, Jim, is this is operating budget includes IMRF. When we do that, we do not include.
Okay. So it's basically the same numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, it was the same overall deficit. So, so with our five-year projection that we were looking back in February, sitting here in July, that you've now fine-tuned numbers more are basically the same.
Correct.
So if we can continue to do that over the five-year plan and modify as appropriate, you all say?
Other questions? We, again, there are, these will be published in the Daily Herald, we do have to have this document on, on public display for 30 days before public hearing and approval. We'll bring this final document again to the board in September for approval. If there are any changes to this document, we would share those with the board as well prior to approval. And any other questions, I'm happy to answer. So I want to go back to the budget highlights, kind of early in the presentation, and Jim asked a little about this, but the 7.2 million that we're allocating in this budget, generally for construction work we're doing this summer, that's made up of 4.2 million of operating budget allocation and drawing down 3 million dollars of our fund balance. Earlier, last school year, we talked about a kind of a multi-year plan to kind of increase the operating budget and use a little bit less of fund balance to get to the Sherman Dirges policy, which is our target of roughly 7.2, 7.5 million. But that comes with a cost, right? So there's a cost of trying to make those allocations, and a little side note, 7.2 million is a fantastic number to invest in our buildings, or, you know, if you look at, other than a handful of really big mega school districts, there's very few school districts that I know of that come close to making, spending $7 million a year, capital improvements, you know, kind of defer maintenance. So I feel very proud of that number that we're able to work towards, but it comes with a cost. There's things that we would love to be able to do that our community has expressed interest in, that, you know, we're not able to do right now because we're ramping up towards that number, towards that policy that the board adopted in early 2017. So we know, we've heard a lot about trying to change the start times for high schools, and there's a cost associated with doing that. We know there'd be certain programs or investments we'd like to make educationally that maybe is not available to us right now. There's a cost, an opportunity cost, as we make those decisions to invest in the buildings as the board, kind of, or the community kind of told us to. And kind of to the point that Jim made a little bit earlier, if you go to the prior page, go backwards one slide, to the purchase services number, you know, we're, we're making those investments in our buildings, but we're also making investments in other things. So this, this technology, HR software is an investment we have to make, the informer cast, the laptop, and we're making investments in kind of the student learning possibilities, we're operational improvements, safety of the kids, so we have to make, we have to balance all these decisions with other investments we need to make too. So as Jim likes to reinforce, and everybody does, there's a lot of broad decisions we have to make, we can't just look at one individual piece and kind of nitpick on that item. But we've done this now 10 years of a balanced budget, so, you know, I kind of applaud the administration and your group, Bill, for kind of guiding this, guiding this down the path and the work that the finance committee's done over the last several years, and I think it's a great story. The fact that we're able to do this is still at an operating level that is below kind of our operating.
operating cost per pupil, below our benchmarks and below the state average, I think it's a great testament to the kind of fiscal stewardship that you've provided to the community, in my opinion. So thank you. Any other questions? Dave, you get all that?
I guess what, Dave's asleep.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was on, I had a question. Yep, I'm all good, I was following along on the presentation.
All right. So any other, any other questions? So again, we're just approving this tonight to post it for a community review. I have a motion and a second to approve the posting of the tentative budget for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year and set the public hearing on the 2019-20 budget for Wednesday, August 14, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the school service. I have a motion and a second.
I'll move to post.
Moved by Mr. Matheson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Erickson. Please call her.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Fawcett?
Yes. Okay, so the approval to post the tentative budget and set the public hearing, that actually I think has passed. Now we have oral reports, I think we have three oral reports tonight, so.
Yes, again, the first oral report over to Suleyakino, who's going to pick board through a community and parent engagement, updated planning for the upcoming school year. And just in a bit of context to this, the community engagement committee has had a chance to preview, look through, I think, the items that are incorporated in this. There's not an approval of the community engagement plan. I think Eric and I were talking, you know, the other day, this time a year ago, as we were going through the community engagement plan, we didn't anticipate that we were going to be running a referendum in the fall and, you know, that found its way into our community engagement plan and, you know, we made room for it. So my view, I think there are a lot of things that you approve as a board. This is really a guide document that obviously is going to likely evolve as we get into the school year, but I think it's a, it's a good thoughtful plan as, as we approach the community engagement work, so.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. So first, I want to start off with a thank you. I want to thank this Board of Education for making community engagement a priority and for listening to the community. And back in 2014, when we ran our Community Engagement Engage 200 program, that was one of the biggest pieces of feedback that we got from the community was that, you know, we want to continue to hear from the board, we want to continue this engagement. And if you look across the state of Illinois and you look at school districts that do have strategic plans, not all of them have community engagement as a priority area. And so I think that says a lot about the board and their commitment and the priority that they place on community engagement, that it's a whole quadrant in your, for your strategic plan. So as we've done in years past, before we highlight some of the features of our upcoming year's plan, let's celebrate some of our great successes. First being, as a community, we came together on November 6th with a 72% pass rate following the successful completion of a grassroots information campaign to approve the construction of a new Jefferson Early Childhood Center. And as you're going to see in a few minutes when I highlight some of our most popular social media posts, anything that we have done around that new early learning center have been some of our most popular posts for the entire year. And so I think that says a lot about this celebration that we have. We launched 21 new websites. So all 20 of our schools, including the district site, launched new websites. And some of the new features that have been, that we were strategic about have been some of the more popular ones. I know they're very difficult to see. And we have a staff directory button on each page right there, where that first little purple arrow is. So if you click on that from any school, it's going to take you to a central, easily searchable staff directory. And I can't tell you how many parents have appreciated that, that it's easy to find contact information for their child's teacher. We have, oh, I can't even read it. A link to the District 200 newsroom, which we're going to talk about in a minute, which is our central location for all district information. That is a button on every single one of our 21 websites. We also have a button here for reporting a safety concern, sorry, it's, oop, right there, where families or students can click on that button. Again, it's on all 21 sites. And they're redirected to a page that gives you an overview of our safety practices and protocols in District 200, our approach to safety. But then also, there's an anonymous form that you can complete if you are not comfortable self-reporting that to a school. And while we have gotten a number of, you know, the, there's, what was the one that we got the other day, JR, was a wild parsnip, which apparently is highly toxic, which was growing in like a stray field on one of our schools. And a parent reported it on that safety concern to, some other things that were called to our attention that we were able to address. And so while we, we do encourage people to always talk to a person live or verbally, that is another option for, for them. And then also that I want to tab, that's that green one up at the top. So on each website, that's very different. And it's an easy, simple way for parents to, I want to find my child's menu, or I want to find my child's bus route. That's a quick link, so nobody has to go digging for information. And then also, I don't have it highlighted here, but those mega menus that kind of pop out if you hover over one of the tabs, again, less digging that you have to do on our website.
Erica, on the safety one, is somebody monitoring that on a regular basis?
So anytime someone submits that, both Dr. Kyle and I automatically immediately get both an email and a text message that someone has submitted that. And then it requires you to list a school that you're identifying with, and then we automatically immediately get in contact with the principal. So yes. We developed a community calendar of all the performing arts activities going on at our high schools and distributed that throughout the community and definitely saw an uptick in some of our participation, especially from some of our senior communities, and which is something that I'm going to talk about later, which is going to be more of a targeted effort. But this was being pretty happily received in our community. We also created this annual poster size that we put in public places throughout the community as well, and is definitely something that we're, Mary Ann is already, Mary Ann in my office is just absolutely incredible, and she's kind of the person that makes all of this kind of stuff and all these great details come together. So we're definitely in the works on this again for next year. We revamped our handbooks, yay! So thank you to Dr. Kyle for your joint partnership and working through that. As we said before, this is a work in progress and especially with some of the new policy adjustments coming forth, this is something that is definitely in our radar for next school year. All right, now I'm going to take you into some really exciting social media stats. I actually, one of the things I'm going to talk about, I've been kind of joined this professional community of social media experts, and they're experts in school social media. And I was talking to her today and walking through a couple of the slides of the presentation, and she was completely blown away by the, some of our social media stats. So this is from July 1 through June 30, so it doesn't include a couple of weeks of July now. So on Facebook, while it doesn't seem like a lot, we did 1,600 new follows, that is, that's huge. But what's more exciting is that our average weekly reach, I should have put on there, is almost 11,000. So that means that last year, every single week, just on Facebook alone, there were 11,000 sets of eyeballs on our posts. And we had 715 posts, and each post had an average engagement of 5,400 people. So these are some of our more popular posts, no doubt the first known day of the school year. We had, that one had, what was it, 232 shares and reached almost 25,000 people, so that's no surprise. But then our second most popular post was the video of the board and community tossing dirt at Jefferson groundbreaking, and that one got 41 shares and over, reached over 11,000 people. We also have our graduation picture that we post, that one got 19 shares, which was I think a little bit lower than last year, which I was surprised about, but still just as good. And then again, when we did the rock toss at Jefferson, those, if you haven't watched that video yet, you have to go back and watch it, the cheers that they, the yay, when the front loader dumped the rocks into the, under the foundation, were just incredible and made all that hard work absolutely worth it. So this is Twitter, so we got just as many follows on Twitter. We always see those upticks in follows when cold weather hits and people are wanting to find out if schools closed or not. But we had, when you see total tweets, over 16,000 where someone used our Twitter handle, either through us doing a post or someone else mentioning us. And our average impressions were 86,000. So when I was looking over this, that says to me, like from a strategic perspective, that while I have placed a lot of emphasis on Facebook, that we need not neglect Twitter, and I need to, well, maybe think about doing some Twitter lives and things like that because there's clearly an audience. We had 45,000 individual visits to our profile last year, which is, again, incredible. Instagram is not so impressive, but I will tell you, while we've had an Instagram account for about a year, I really only started using it since beginning of June. But just in the last week of the fiscal year, we had almost 7,000 impressions. So that also says to me that we've got a lot of parents, especially, and students, who are on Instagram and need not neglect that. Our newsroom, so one of the big changes that we made last year was, previously, we would, if we pushed out a board highlights, it would be on the board section of the website. If we pushed out a message from Dr. Schuler, it'd be on his section of the website. So it was a focus on learning, it'd be under the communications, and it just got very disjointed. And so instead, we developed our own newsroom, which is a blog site where we can post a number of stories, but all of the stories, every single board highlight is posted as its own story, Dr. Schuler's messages go up there, even stories that don't, aren't included in like a focus on learning, that we just, maybe a teacher sends me a great picture and a paragraph, that goes on there and then again gets shared on their social media. But, so I took this screenshot, I know it's very difficult to read, but on June 17th, for the last 90 days, we had almost 6,000 minutes read in the 90 days preceding June 17th. That's a lot of minutes. So while there were, for that 90-day period, and granted, this is including when school was out, we had 114 visitors, but what that's telling me is the people that are going to the newsroom and aren't just seeing the headline on our social media, they're taking the time to read, and that's very important.
They read our meeting minutes? Is that what you're talking about, minutes?
No, maybe they read a highlight from a board, like a board's highlight story.
I think anyway, you're better than me. I forgot to turn my volume.
So what does all of this tell us? We have, we have to be as many places as we can to meet people where they are. So our 2019-20 community engagement plan really builds off of a lot of what we learned last year and a lot of what we talked about in terms of, we have to tell our own story. We carried this message with us for staff, with community, because as we have seen, if we don't tell our own story, someone else is going to try to do that for us. And so what I'm going to go through right now is just some highlights. So this is your annual, as Chris calls it, your annual placemat. It's in your folder right here. And all of it, what's highlighted in yellow is either a modification or an addition. And so I'm going to go through just a few of those additions right now. This year, we are really, really going to focus on celebrating our students to connect our communities. By celebrating our students and staff, we are giving our community a front row seat into our classrooms. Each one of you, both our board and senior leadership, have children. How many of you have children that at the end of the day, you ask them, how was your day? What did you do? What did you learn? And they say to you, I don't know, it was fine, right? Or they say, mm, I don't know. Social media gives families a way to connect with their kids in ways that they weren't able to before. So what I mean by that is during the day, if you see a post from your child's teacher about what they're doing during the day, you have a conversation starter at the dinner table. You have a conversation starter when they get home. Or even in the community, you have a conversation starter, hey, I saw your son or daughter on Instagram the other day, planting a pollinator garden at Madison Elementary, that is so cool. It's an instant conversation starter. And when parents see their kids on social media during the day, they love it. They get excited and they share it. They share it with grandparents, which is a segment of our population we try to reach. They share it with aunts and uncles, and it goes on and on. Celebrating and connecting our communities allows us to stop thinking of schools as something we pay for and start thinking about schools as something we invest in. We have to celebrate our school, one story at a time. So how will we do this? We have to flatten our walls and give the community a view into our schools, not only through social media, but through some of the targeted activities that I'm going to talk about in a bit. We have to let our students tell the story of what they are learning in class and how they're applying it. And this is a little bit of a mind shift even for me too, of I'm going to go into a classroom, I'm going to listen to the teacher, I'm going to have the teacher tell me what the kids are working on, and then I'm going to snap a few pictures of the kids and I'm going to post it in an article. We have seen a lot more success in reach and engagement when we allow little guys like Brett Linhardt to tell the story of about how he wrote a book about how to stop bullying and how others can do that too. And we have to allow our students to tell the story. They want to hear from our kids, they're great ambassadors. I can put a photo of an adult up and it's only going to go so far, but I put a kid on camera and wow. As an example, we posted a video this morning of some kid, I was talking about what they think their teachers really do over the summer. Just today alone, that video has over 2,000 views, just on Facebook. And so that doesn't include Instagram and Twitter. So people want to hear from our kids, and that's going to be one change to one of our key initiatives that I'm going to talk about in just a minute. And by showcasing our student-centered schools. So this image behind you is of Wheaton North's Smash Club. Smash Club is part of an emerging trend of esports or gamers. This image right here, and if you go, if you haven't visited this club, it is so cool, you have to go check them out. Marielle and Murphy over at North is the sponsor of this, and she is just a saint because that room is so incredibly diverse. But what I love about this picture and that club is that it is a true example of how our schools go above and beyond to make sure there's an opportunity for all students to connect them to our schools. And it shows how all of our collective planning has the best interest of our students in mind. So how are we going to do this? We are really going to focus on how to utilize our true best and biggest, biggest group of ambassadors, our staff. Our staff are the largest numbers and, like I said, best ambassadors. More than 50% of our staff live within District 200 boundaries. Our goal this year is to get as many staff and therefore community members sharing and engaging on social media. There's three simple ways. Simply by liking, commenting, or sharing posts, encouraging them to submit content either to their school account or somebody else at their school manages an account, or even to me at the district level, and encouraging them to start their own social, professional social media account. Facebook has an algorithm. One, if you like it, the post gets one, gets one point. If someone comments on it, it gets seven points. And if you share it, it gets 14 points. And all those points add up, and then Facebook pops it to the top of people's feeds. And so I share that example even for you as board members, to even just think about when you see something, and you don't hesitate to comment on it, even a, love it, great to see something like this in our school, or just simply liking it or consider sharing it. But please share that information with your friends too, that just by simply liking, sharing, and commenting, even if they don't want to develop their own post, is an incredible help to telling. is an incredible help to telling our story.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
We can't comment on each other's posts. We have to be real clear on that, that creates a...
Yeah, yeah, you're, you certainly to like or share something, you're good. When you start to create original comment, you're right. You have a couple of board members together, that can create a problem.
So why teachers and staff? Teachers are the luckiest people on earth. Teaching is the one profession that creates all other professions. And parents often realize that their child's teacher gets more time in a week with them, with their child than they do. And they want to see the great teaching and learning that's happening. We have a lot to be proud of in our community schools and we can never give up the opportunity to say something great about our schools. The best part of this campaign is that it will support all of our Vision 2022 strategic areas, whether it's telling a great story about a student stepping up to stop bullying, that's school safety and SEO. A problem-based learning project like creating a pollinator garden, FIT, and SEO. Our facilities team keeping our schools in great shape. Or refreshing Chromebooks and laptops to students and staff to support the awesome in teaching and learning in our schools. More importantly, it is our hope that with this approach of flattening our walls, amplifying student voice, and highlighting our student-centered schools, we are inclusive of all students. So how are we going to do this? So my goal is to, within the first quarter of the year, hold a optional lunch and learn at each school, which we'll schedule. I am going to work diligently with some of our local restaurants to get that food provided so that that is a carrot to encourage teachers to come because if nothing else, we know our schools, people love free food. So if I can get them to just come for the free sandwich, that's it. But we hope that these optional lunch and learns will inspire, encourage, and motivate them to help us celebrate and tell the story of our schools, provide them the tools on how to start their own social media accounts, including ideas for posts. So one of the things, when I was talking to Dr. Schuler about this idea, which I appreciate very much his support, some of the feedback was, this is great, but they really need some tools and ideas on, okay, where do I go from here? And so some of the handouts that you'll see here, I provided in your packet, are some of the ideas, some of the handouts and tools that will provide our teachers so they're not just starting from scratch, so that they can go back and like, oh, I can, you know, have my kids say the top 10 reasons that our school rocks. Or, oh, October is National Bullying Prevention Month. How did our school, how did my classroom talk about, from an SEO perspective, on how to address bullying? And so these are some tools to really help them and guide them in that journey. Okay, now I'm going to kind of move on and talk about some other things. This, I want to thank Mr. Paulson for this idea. He was at a conference one day and heard another, one of my colleagues in another district talking about, he just goes to a school one day a month and kind of parks it. Or in our case, probably more than once a month and just parks it. Pops around to different classrooms, snaps videos, snaps pictures, and just like real time in the schools, rather than waiting for content to come to us, park it and find that content. And I think what I hope through this too is if I'm in a school for a day, then like, well maybe over the lunch hour, if people have questions on the social media campaign or I'm thinking about doing this, or what do you think about that? This is an opportunity to kind of interact with staff and support that. So thank you for that idea.
So just to kind of amplify that, the example I saw was that community relations person would go in, do a little like interview with her phone of a student, and pull them out of the classroom and interview for like a minute, and then just post that on Facebook and Twitter. So it's really the student all the time, it was pretty good.
And I like that too, because then it takes a little less pressure off teachers feeling like they need to push content or stop what they're doing, take a picture, send it to me, rather we're just there doing that. We want to develop some new communications templates. So we've got our standard Focus on Learning, we've got the Board's template, we've got the Superintendent template, we have the General District one. But really branding some of our other communications, so developing one of our, it's on your placemat too, working with Dr. Solagi on a Wellness Wednesday feature. So one Wednesday a month, we'll have a wellness piece article. And so that template will be branded around Wellness Wednesday, as well as a finance one, and then a technology one. Those may not be used as often as some of the others, but just something that, where it both comes from a different sender, but looks different than something that you might usually get to hopefully stop people to take some time to read. I mentioned developing that community calendar again. This is an awesome picture of students from Wheaton North with residents of Belmont Village up on Geneva Road. So this was two years ago, but the school's creative writing class partnered with Belmont Village students, yeah, I think a number of board members remember this. This was incredibly touching, students wrote life memoirs of these residents and seniors. And then photography students took pictures, candid, they found it into a book and then gave it to them at a luncheon at Belmont Village that the facility hosted. It was just incredibly touching and moving. And so last year, we built on that and really had some targeted conversations with Windsor Park. They brought several busloads of people to some of the concerts at Wheaton North. What they liked was that we offered to reserve seating for them. Reduced ticket prices if there was one, or eliminating that. But we've already been in communication with Wyndhamir as well. But what I mean by that is, we need to have more targeted strategic partnerships rather than put out a community calendar and say, come on by whenever you're free, rather setting up individual times to meet, to see what their needs are, what our needs are, and how we can partner to best fulfill that. Including just putting some of our student artwork on display in their facility. Like they love that, they love the idea of maybe an evening where they're just like coffee and cookies and the students come and talk about their artwork that's on display, love it. So that's going to, I know some, a lot of times we talk about that other 75% that we're always trying to reach. And I think that we just need to be like laser targeted this year on that, so that's a focus. State of our Schools, so we talked about, last year we got a lot of great feedback on the change in format of State of our Schools, moving into a video where we had the various department leads or superintendents giving an update on what are some celebrations from the prior year, what are we focused on in the current year. Love the change in format. I still didn't feel like we just got enough bang for our buck or enough reach on that. Not because the video wasn't beautiful or it wasn't succinct and well scripted, but I think people just, they like hearing from kids. And so one of the things we're going to try to do this year is have that same message come from students and have the students tell the story of this went well last year and this is what our focus is in the coming year. And I think by the students telling it, that'll articulate a little bit more of the why, but also get more people to watch it. Because if you know that your kid isn't a video, you're going to be more likely to seek that out and watch it. Last year Lowell celebrated 100 years and we had hundreds of people either engaged prior to that open house, but we had, I think, four or 500 people just come to that open house last fall. And Sanford is celebrating 50 years and they are already doing such a great job. You saw them walking in the Fourth of July parade. They have got a group of parent volunteers that are just so excited about this. So I'm sure that that's going to be a great opportunity, so please mark your calendars for that. We are planning on two mailings to all homes in the district. One, we're looking at early October, including the main points of our State of the Schools video, including a QR code to view the video, but then also the dates on our community calendar to get those pushed directly in the mailboxes. And then looking at a print mailing at the end of year with the end of year update, similar to kind of Dr. Schuler's end of year message with the celebrations from the prior year, including those in that print mailing. Sorry, I'm trying to fly. We want to redesign our district profile. It's been, we've had that one for about four years now and it's a little stale. We want to move it more towards an infographic type look and then develop a separate Finance FAQ sheet. I don't know if you've ever seen, handed out in our Legislative Breakfast, Indian Prairie 204 has got a beautiful infographic about finance. And so working with Mr. Farley and Kim and developing that as well as another tool for all of us to use to kind of tell the story in District 200. We have got so far, an awesome lineup of parent workshops with a couple of, well, one for sure, big name, and working on a couple of others. Jessica Leahy, who's the author of The Gift of Failure, is coming on September 19th. Thanks to Dr. Solagi for securing that. She's going to speak with parents on September 19th, 7 o'clock at Hubble. We expect that we will pack the auditorium of 500 people. And then the next morning, she is going to speak with 500 of our...
All of our third through eighth grade staff.
All of our third through eighth grade staff, and talking about that as well. Jennifer Senzel, she's spoken before, she's, we, she's one of our, we use her in District 2, but she last year did Taming the Anxiety Beast with our parents and that was very well attended. And that was also a topic that parents indicated that they wanted to see more of, addressing teen anxiety. So she's coming back. And then Screenagers, which we filled two theaters two years ago at Studio Movie Grill, is coming out with a sequel and we previewed the trailer. And Dr. Solagi, Tracy Burnham and I were really excited. And so we're going to bring that in winter and spring. And we're working on a couple of other workshops too, just don't have dates on that for right now. So recommendation is to keep the dashboard metric the same as last year, making progress. I don't know if we'll ever make great progress or attainment. It's always, we're always working to find ways to engage our community because the challenge with this is there's no one way to engage all of our community members and which is why we're kind of spread all over the place. So I went through that kind of quickly, that was a lot of slides. But again, this is, this is our community engagement plan. This is the Board's Community Engagement Plan. And so I welcome any feedback, additions, things you think we should remove to the plan.
I think it's great, first of all, thank you for all that you've done. And I think that we've really made a lot of good progress in that. And I know one of the things that you had, that we talked about were the town halls that we had, that some were well attended, some were not. And I think it's still good for us to put ourselves out there a little bit and have some time where the community can ask questions. And I'm wondering if, because these parent series are so well attended, is it possible, maybe, it's just a thought, to say, you know, okay, well, the parent series is going to start at 7:00. We're going to have, at 6:00, we're going to have the superintendent that will be there to answer any questions. You know, kind of have a town hall-ish, I don't know if you want to call it that, but have that opportunity beforehand because people are going to be coming anyway, you know, for this. That, you know, is something that's bringing them there. And so kind of to your point of go where they're at, that they're there and we know they're going to be there, it's going to be a large audience. So maybe that's an opportunity to put that on top of that. You know, because it's something that somebody's already planning to go to and maybe they can squeeze in another 45 minutes on top of it. Maybe not, but at least you know people are going to be there instead of us going to a place and hoping people show up. You know, so, so I think that was one of my, you, actually a lot of the questions I had to answer in the presentation, so thank you.
Anybody else? So I have just a couple of quick comments. First off, I think it's, we've come so far, it's amazing. And this little placemat is fantastic and we continue to evolve. And you ask the same question every year, what do you want us to consider adding to it? And I love the fact that, you know, we've got these two print mailings to all the homes. I feel, I feel strongly that, you know, we talked about 70%, or 75%. In fact, I was at the school board meeting the other night in one of our nearby communities and they had the same number. They talked about how do we reach those 70% residents that don't have kids in their school. So we're not alone in that challenge. But I feel like we have done so much great stuff. Food service change, debt restructuring, all this stuff, the student achievements. I want to just tell that story and make sure everybody in our community knows. So I, you know, I love the fact that we're looking at print mailing that goes to 100% of the addresses. And, you know, I want to make sure we tell kind of what we've achieved, what our challenges are going forward and what our plans are to, to, you know, to try to, you know, improve the district and improve student achievement at that point. So that's kind of my, my big picture is, I love the print mailing and I want to make sure that we kind of message, if we can, message it around what we've accomplished, what our challenges are, what our plans are looking forward. And then the other thing that, maybe this is a little, you know, more out there in terms of a target, but is there a way to kind of dig into the data in that 70% of whether that's the right number or not and really kind of figure out who, who are those parents whose kids are gone? You know, is there a way to figure out which residents, their kids are out of the school versus those residents who might have younger kids coming into the school? And then find a way, if there's a way to customize that message? I don't know how we would do that. But we've talked a lot about reaching that 70% and we're doing great stuff. But this may be kind of a bigger picture goal is to kind of customize some of that messaging in whatever medium that is, using the data that we might be able to kind of decipher out of our voter rolls. Just a thought.
That is something that we've looked at in the past and I think that we just haven't drilled down into it from like utilizing it as part of our community engagement plan. But I do think that is a possibility to drill through.
So if we were, if we had the data and we wanted to do a print mailing, maybe we send a different type of print mailing to those residents that have kids coming into the schools versus a different print mailing or a different insert or something, whatever that is, to those, to those parents whose kids are now out of the schools. They're going to want to hear a different message or receive our message differently. So it's just a thought. Maybe it's too big for the coming school year, but maybe, maybe that's the second mailing. If we had the time to do it, we have data, we can figure that out.
I was, yeah, I was thinking along those same lines, but not in a mailing, but more in email form. Like when you have, you have these emailists of band parents and football parents and our, you know, STEM parents and things like that. And then their, their kids graduate and, but you still, most likely their email address is still the same. And they can obviously help out, but I think that's a way to maybe keep in communication with those parents. It's not as frequently, you don't want to keep them burning because they won't read it. But it could just be something that maybe it's an orderly email that goes out to those, what I call like alumni parents that were, are still sort of close to the school, but would have an interest to know, like, hey, even though my kid's two years out, like, you know, this team or group just won the state, whatever, you know what I mean? And just like be, invite them back to a showcase or to a game, to let them know like, hey, here's when, here's the season again, just to keep them engaged, you know, through email even. But again, not too often, but we have all that information and what their kids were involved in. And I think if you try to reach them through that channel and maybe add a couple little points about the district, you know, at the end, but, does that make sense?
Yes. So one thing I will say is every year, so when we switch over on July 1, if you've had a student graduate out and you have no other kids in the school, theoretically, your email address would drop out of our system. But I work with Laura Morris, she's awesome. So we pull that file down and re-upload them so that we don't lose them. So we still keep communicating with them. And I will tell you, we've probably been doing that for the last three, four years. And I get less than 50 people saying, please take me off your list. So, but I hear what you're saying, is, is there a way to be more targeted about?
That's why we don't have kids in our school anymore, yeah. You're still doing that, but I think it's a way to, yeah, it's just a way to get that information out to them. And I, and another point, when you were talking about, you know, I think it's a great idea to have the kids start delivering some of these messages. And, you know, something that I think resonates with people, I just, I think about, you know, I have a neighbor who are, they're very engaged, their children went through District 200, out of college now. Engaged people, but they're not, they don't stay connected to the school district. And that's who I think, I keep thinking about when I look at these plans, like how do we reach them? You know, and because we can send them mailing, but I don't know that they're going to read it. You know, and like I know I've had conversations with her about, and I'm not saying I shouldn't send it, that's not at all what I'm saying. But I, but I just think too, when you're, if you're looking, as you're looking at the, going into these retirement or the senior facilities, that we've got to think about those people too, who are still living in homes, who kids are out of the district and that. I think that's going to be more at a personal level, you know, because I mentioned to her, I was talking to her about this exact thing. And I said, you know, what if, what if, you know, my son came here and said, I mean, there's not tickets at middle school level, but you know, and he's in high school, like, here's two tickets to the play. You know, I'm working on plates for the play, would you like to come as my guest to the play? And she's like, I would love that.
Yeah.
And so that, but that's a very personal thing and I, but I'm just... And I, but I'm just wondering if there's a way eventually to get our students involved. Like, hey, you know, and you can't give all these tickets away because I realize that's a moneymaker. But is there maybe a portion of tickets that can be given without a fee, you know, given to some, you know, do you have a neighbor who's not in District anymore? And get them back in the school to see what's going on 15 years later? You know? And I, you know, just that kind of a thing.
There's a couple of things that I just want to react to. Because I think the one thing that's not on here and we have to remember and that we saw, especially in our November information campaign, is that word of mouth is still the most unpopular way to get information out. And we can't... The way that she's staying connected, your neighbor's staying connected to schools is through you. And so I, my, I think part of what this staff social media campaign is set to do is to just celebrate the heck out of our schools. And it's you can't avoid hearing a story or a celebration. And that, like you, if your child was celebrated or something like that, that maybe someone will tell that neighbor who maybe is disconnected or... You see what I'm saying? So I think I'm hoping for a trickle-down effect on that. And again, we evaluate this thing every year. But I do think, I think it's a great idea. This came up out of our community engagement committee meeting is to include the community calendar dates on that first mailing and saying, you are invited to come into our schools. Please come to one of these performing arts events. And if we start there, maybe we do keep this targeted. Like Windsor Park, how many seats do you guys want? Windermere, how many seats do you guys want? So kind of working it that way.
Great. Anybody else?
Just one comment that I don't know if we are. When we talk about fundraising and so on, do we track in any way the alumni?
We do. The foundation has started, like, kind of, you know, it's a very big base to take down.
Yeah, it's probably 70%. And it probably have more vested in the sense that they're going to have kids coming into the school. So I think it's a topic that we need to get some consideration for.
Well, I think, too, even if you target the parents of recent graduates, probably for the first eight years, you know, you're looking at the success of your children right out of school. And then as they start to get jobs out of college and, you know, get gratitude. I mean, I think that that's a really key audience is a parent like me who has just had my kids have recently left. You know, I'm grateful for the school to show for the opportunities that they have and stay connected with that group.
Thank you. Just kind of quickly, though, in closing. So my word of caution is it is around a whole lot of things. We can do anything. We cannot do everything. And so if you really want to start, and again, not, none of the ideas are mad, but if we're going to start going down the road of like significant, like alumni tracking and some of that, even honestly, some of the data pieces, at some point, we're going to have to have a conversation about if the value is there, that we're willing to invest more in that. We're doing all of this, honestly, as much as, you know, we will occasionally get the question about it. We're doing this on a shoestring of a budget, really, around, you know, community engagement. Or could Marianne and the team do an excellent job? Will you see our strategies and capitalize on what is kind of the free resource to carry this message and staff and those pieces? So again, good ideas. I just, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that some of these ideas, if we really got to start to go down that road, we're going to have to talk about what kind of an investment we would need to make in that. And again, then you're going to put that up against, you know, some of these other conversations. And if you have, it's hard, too. It's not just... Correct. Yeah.
Well, I think that gets under the fundamental of what are we trying to achieve? You know, and if it's a long-term, if it's a message, it's one thing. If it's a long-term development of a strategy to fund, you know, improvements. You know, those are big differences. Things we're missing, early childhood or all-day kindergarten, all those things. I mean, you know, we have to know what our mission of doing it is. And, you know, so I guess if you're going to say that, I'm going to say, why are we doing what we're doing? Why are we doing what we're doing? We're communicating with the parents. That's it. And that's a normal responsibility. But anytime we try to reach outside to hit that 70%, you know, we're trying to do something, I hope. So I think we have to determine what that is. Set that goal and say, what is it that we're trying to achieve?
Yeah. Fair enough.
All right. Thank you. Second oral report is the June and August EC12 Leadership Meetings.
Yeah. So we have a new team on here. We do. So through the, through the last couple of, last couple, through last year, we've committed regular practice of doing educational services of teaching and learning and SEL updates. And so we thought we took a little, we take a little different approach to that through a couple of the summer meetings and kind of do an integrated update. So that's, I think, what you're going to see. So Chris, looks like you got the mic first.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Schuler. So what I hope to do is really, truth be told, we will only really skim the surface on some of these topics here. But the idea is also to know that there is more information to come on each of these. For context, you see the topic up there, June to August Leadership Meetings. So when the school year ends and our principals, our leaders in our buildings have, you know, a day or two to really take a breath, take it all in. But really, this becomes now the time that we value, from a senior leadership perspective, to work with our building leaders. So we end up, a couple of days after the school year ends, we end up having about four hours with them. And then again, in August, we have a full day with them. And these are, these are really two times where we are focused on developing them as leaders, also growing and supporting them, but also working on initiatives, goals that we have strategically that lay right within Vision 2022. So I'm going to talk about those. You'll hear from each of us on a little bit of our work, not only in the June and August meetings, what we've done in June and what we plan to do in August, but also just a little bit of each of our work as we're working in our roles. So I'm going to start with leadership learning collaborative. So when we brought our leadership team together in June, the first area that we focused on with them was really their own professional growth, their own professional learning. As you may know or recall, this past year, we rolled out a pretty extensive professional learning opportunity through our EC12 monthly structure with our principals and leadership team. And in the spring, we surveyed them and we said, okay, what did you like about the learning opportunities that were provided to you? But what do you want more of to help you grow and help support you? And really, two themes emerged. The first was that they wanted more time to collaborate with their colleagues. And the second was is that they wanted autonomy and on-demand resources around the needs of their schools, right? And so the tweak or the improvement that we're making to our professional learning program, and we started with, again, getting input from them at the June meeting, was to form really professional learning collaboratives for them. And this is where EAB comes into the whole of it as well because EAB is the resource that can provide us that on-demand research and resource to support that professional learning. Additionally, the thought first in June was just to ask our principals, assistant principals, our leaders, what do you need, right? And really gather their input on topics that they're interested in, where they need to be supported and grow. Why is this important? We know that we need to, from a senior leadership perspective, support and grow our leaders so that they can impact teacher practice, right? So really, our role starts with impacting our leaders so that they can have the impact on teachers. This gives us an opportunity to give our principals and our leaders focused and flexible learning in a collaborative setting, gives them access to research and relevant practice. We plan to use our existing, we have monthly meetings with our leadership team. We plan to use that existing time to grow them. And this also accomplishes their Administrator Academy credit. So every year, all of our leaders, to keep their certificates current, have to take an Administrator Academy. We're able to take that cost away from them, do it in-house here, and give them some real on-demand learning and professional growth. You see some of the topics that we'll be tackling, and they'll be in collaborative groups of their choice. And those are large research studies that EAB has done thoroughly, not only from the literature side, but identifying best-practice districts and schools that are closing the college access gap, supporting mental health needs, meeting the career readiness imperative, engaging parent-school community, knowing the itching. So just again, we spent time with our administrators. I highlight that because going back to our topic, what do we do in June and how does this impact moving forward? So tying that now to kind of the next topic that we covered at June. We started with the professional learning atmosphere or the growth for our leaders, right? But truth be told, the people that really have the influence and impact on student learning are our teachers. But it's the atmosphere that our leaders set up for them that helped them or can empower them even greater. So the next topic that we covered was really, what is the learning atmosphere that you're providing within your own school? And you'll see the graphic down below. And this was a question that we started with. You'll see an arrow and you'll see some words getting bigger. And we started with the question, how do we grow our school cultures from cultures that are compliant to cultures where people are seeking to understand and learn and grow and become competent? And ultimately, turning that competence and confidence into practice, which has the greatest impact? We talked about three areas, enhancing quality of efficacy, which is really, really high-functioning professional learning communities. We challenged our leaders and really had some reflection about how we're utilizing leadership and empowering teachers to be leaders in our schools. And looked at how does this affect improving instructional practice? All this really had a correlation to school improvement, which myself, Dr. Kyle, and obviously Mrs. Murphy oversee. Mrs. Murphy selectively will oversee all the school improvement planning. She'll be talking a little bit about her work on the next slide. But all of us are involved in this because we all work and supervise our principals, right? There's a strong correlation to the LEAD grant, that 13 principals of, 13 of our principals are participating in it as well. So then tying school improvement is also the collaborative and cycles of inquiry process that we started to expand on during our time there. So just to cover those first two topics, and as you just kind of see, we're just, the focus here is what are we doing in June? And how is this tied to August? And really, why the importance of our summer work is really, really an important time. Next, I'm going to turn over to Mrs. Murphy. She's going to talk about her work 10 days into the job. And she's been quite busy, so I don't know what to do.
Well, thank you, Dr. Sloggy. And it's actually one in seven. Exactly. So it's nice to have an opportunity to speak to all of you tonight relative to the work that I've been doing around my transition. And so really, on the docket first was that whole idea around accelerating my learning, about what's been happening in District 200. And that learning plan entailed a lot of one-on-one meetings with our administrative team. And so the group that I started with is represented in the top part of the graphic, where I really started with directors that are here in this building because I knew that I was going to have to hit the ground running on July 1 and working with them immediately. And then the next group that I started to meet with in the month of June were the elementary principals. And that was also Ms. Jefferson and Ms. Farley. And we had a lot of conversations, each individually, about what's happening in their buildings. And now I've moved on to the middle school principals and also our high school principals this week and next week. And it's been really great because I've heard all the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. Also, it's allowed me to hit the ground running around the school improvement efforts and the projects that are in motion. So.
Thank you. So again, we're kind of recapping our work and household works together. Taking it back to our June work. So again, let's just recap. We started with professional learning for our principals. How does that learning translate to our teachers? The next topic that we unveiled with our leadership team was the Portrait of a Graduate. And how does this tie together? When we think about all the work we do, and we actually started with this graphic, all the work that we do is really focused around churning out the highest-level graduates when our kids leave us, right? And so myself, Dr. Kyle, and Mr. Biskin led the initial session in the availability of Portrait of a Graduate. So I'm going to touch on what Portrait of a Graduate is today, but there will also be a more detailed review in August. And then we'll also be leading the Board of Education through an impact session as well around Portrait of a Graduate. So this will be a topic you'll be hearing about throughout the year. One of the things we started with in our June meeting with our leadership team was saying, why develop Portrait of a Graduate, right? One, it expresses the school's community aspirations for all students, humanizes our work. It also allows our entire community, school community, to give input to what they believe or see as the most essential competencies and characteristics that our graduates should have when they leave us. And it ensures that the students are the center of our work. And if I'm a community member, it really can articulate what we can expect of a product of District 200 when they leave us. Now, you can imagine, as you think about gathering input on the characteristics that we want from our graduates, right? And that's the first exercise that Dr. Kyle, myself, and Mr. Biskin led our leadership team through. We have to create some context around them. And so we're going to talk about those two context points that we let our leadership team through. So the first one is focused on academic achievement and future-ready skills. So.
And this one is really important. As you look at the Portrait of a Graduate, you start thinking of this new idea. We really want to balance, that's why we use that visual, the balance between academic skills and knowledge that all of our students need when they leave us and also the future-ready skills and experiences. So that's the context we looked when we're looking at Portrait of a Graduate. And again, like, when you think of a classroom, if one's a little too heavy, it goes down, the other one goes up. We want to make sure that's the lens that we're looking at in Portrait of a Graduate.
The other context, though, what we, I believe our educators are aware of that balance, right? Of the high need for high academic skills and then obviously those problem-solving skills. The other piece that we brought to them as part of the process was considering workforce trends, right? And thinking about, we're churning out graduates that are going to go into the future workforce. And so there's five future workforce trends that we kind of unveiled and asked them to think about the skills that it would take within these. So I'm going to briefly go over these with you just to give a little more context when we think about what do our graduates need? And we ask that question to our stakeholders. First workforce trend being pace of change, the speed of innovation, and how quickly our society and our world is changing, you know, in every aspect. And the key question around that is, are our graduates prepared to cultural change? What are we doing to prepare our graduates to cultural change? Second, workforce trend being the information explosion. We're all very aware of this. The access to information all the time. But are our graduates able to accurately decipher the appropriate information and use that to their advantage, right? Third workforce trend being repetitive versus non-routine tasks, right? We see many of the repetitive tasks in the work world going away. And we see a greater need for complex problem solvers, right? The fourth, so one, is that an on-demand skill? And how are we preparing complex problem solvers? The fourth workforce trend that we explored was the service economy. Currently, right now, about 70 to 80% of the professions are service-based. You know, initially, when you think service economy, you think education, healthcare. But it actually goes, when you look at it from this lens, it's actually any profession where you're serving or working with others. Anywhere from the legal industry, architecture, accounting, any of these pieces where you're serving and working with others fall into that service economy. And the key question around that or context around that is, what skills does it take to serve others, to work with others, right? To be successful? And the fifth context was the free agent economy that we explored. A growing workforce area. This is really the contract-based work piece This is really the contract-based workplace where individuals are working and really contracting their services, their skills out, and are individually employed. And this question, again, you explore, what skills does it take to be your own boss, to be your own manager? What skills does it take to market yourself? All those different pieces. So myself, Dr. Kyle, and Mr. Biskin led our leaders through this, right, to create context, all getting at the question, what do we want from our graduates when they leave us? Hate to stop there on, and just give you that snippet of Portrait of a Graduate, right? But again, the topic today is to say, what does our summer work look like? And as you can see, the flow within the topics that we're covering with our principals, hopefully you're seeing some alignment, right? And I think the, kind of the close, and I know Charlie, Dr. Kyle's going to go a little further in Alice for the next presentation, so none of this is possible either without a safe school environment. So we closed our June work with our leaders. Actually, Dr. Kyle is going to give you more detail on this with the first initial more deeper dive into Alice training for the leadership team. This not only is about just an intruder, but it also falls into school safety and a whole of these things. Dr. Kyle, myself, and many of our team members have also worked on our risk assessment procedures for risk of harm to self and risk of harm to others. That certainly falls under school safety. We'll be diving deeper into that in August with our team. Additionally, that will also bring a new policy through, not one that you see in your prospect recommended manual, but a policy that we want to bring through the policy process, through our Board Policy Team 4.190, which speaks to having a threat assessment team. We already have those procedures in place, but we want to make sure we're thorough as we bring that policy through. What does this all mean for August, right? So anytime a senior leadership team is planning the professional learning and the growth opportunities for our leadership team, we're really diligent and we want to connect concepts from June to August, right? So the connecting concepts are really finalizing that professional learning for our EC-12 leaders in August. What is it going to look like specifically as we've worked the whole year out for them? Diving even deeper into school improvement and looking at it through the lens from the principal piece, right? Solidifying our Portrait of a Graduate input process and taking the input we got from our stakeholders and solidifying that with them. And then we'll be doing even a deeper dive into safety training, risk assessment training. So the next part of this, Dr. Kyle's going to actually go more in depth on Alice a little bit and get started giving a little preview there. But I'm going to stop and just have to ask, there's any questions? Because we covered a lot in a short amount of time as we talk about our June to August work.
Just to be clear on that, what is the setting in which this is occurring? You mentioned you had a meeting and there was, you know, presenters, and the audience is the principals?
It's sort of, within this context, actually, it's principals, assistant principals, directors, the, Mr. Farley's department. Our June and August opportunities is our entire leadership team, actually, this is about fifty staff members that get together for this. We hosted at Wheaton North in June and Wheaton West in August.
So you're doing a presentation in that setting that would deal with the Portrait of a Graduate? And what's the feedback back and forth? How's that session work?
Just in regards to Portrait of a Graduate?
Yeah, just any of those.
Any of these, yeah. Yeah, we really, we really try and model an interactive learning environment, right? So there's an opportunity for us to create context to present, just like I am. And there's an opportunity for our leaders to engage with one another. Typically, we want them reflecting and sharing out. And then we try to utilize in technology as well, in particular to Portrait of a Graduate. We actually modeled a tool called Thought Exchange, where they were able to use an electronic tool and rate their input and their thought, and then we were able to gather that on a data sheet and look at what it is. So we're trying to use all those best practices within learning, the same type of learning atmosphere that we want our teachers using with kids.
This is a relatively new approach, is it not?
I think we're always trying to create that, so.
I mean, the program that you're describing where you're having the sit-down session and describing, let's say again, the Portrait of a Graduate?
Maybe it may be one of the more first times that we're talking about it, but I would like to believe in even during my time as principal here in the district and working with my colleagues, that we've always tried to really create that environment. And when we think about learning, you know, it's hard to learn when you're sitting and getting, right? Ultimately, we need to be moving and engaging, so we always seek to do that, and I think we'd all agree on that. So it's always that challenge of how do we engage our adult learners?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand, the, I guess, when you do that and you're getting that feedback, are you shocked at times about things, that perceptions that are out there, or are you feeling they're pretty consistent amongst the schools?
Yeah, I think within our schools, I would very rarely say that I'm shocked, only because I think our senior leadership team has such close touchpoints with our schools, right? We value the input, we look for different mechanisms, but very rarely, I think, are we shocked by the effort from our direct schools, just because I think we're in our schools, we're aligned with them.
Do you get any reaction from new, like a new assistant principal that was hired, or a new principal that was hired, that they, they react in any way of what's happened in other places that would be significantly different than what we're doing?
Yeah, I think we hear all the positive feedback. As a matter of fact, that the next morning after we had presented, I was sharing with Dr. Schuler, one of the new principals we hired, who was a principal in a previous district and is now coming back to be a principal with us, said, I'm reminded of how high the standard here is in District 200, which I thought was a great compliment to the work that we had on that day. So I think we hear a feedback from, and sometimes many really good ideas from people that come from other districts as well.
I always like to hear those details when I hear your presentations, you know, again, you know, sometimes you're up here and I'm down here, you know? But, you know, it's educational world that you're talking in, but I'd like to hear those, you know, the reactions to people, particularly those that are new, or, you know, some of the results of the programs. It's, it's, it's good information, like what you just described, that when we have a new principal that reacts in some way. Helps me understand that, or makes me feel better that we're accomplishing the objective of what we're trying to accomplish. That's great.
Just a quick comment on the Portrait of a Graduate. This is kind of the first time it's been kind of laid out to the board. I know it's very kind of introductory, but as I think about it, we're going to have multiple conversations and kind of understand the why, the why think about it, why is it important? I'm imagining a conversation in our schools, or probably more importantly, in our community is, okay, so we have, we have this Portrait of a Graduate, what does it mean to me? If I'm a parent being told by the school district, hey, we've got this new Portrait of a Graduate, what's it mean to me? What's the benefit going to be to my students? But maybe more importantly for the board, as we just get into this, how is this going to direct our work? You know, what's going to be brought to us that we need to help advise or make decisions on to, to think about how we can help support? Not just the development of the portrait, but make it achievable through our actions. So those are kind of some of the things, if Rob was here, some of the things that I'm thinking about, something like he would say, big, big topic to, you know, get into. But as we go forward in multiple conversations with us, that's what I'd really love to, you know, understand, is what's it mean to us? What's the benefit of it? And how's it going to shape our directions and decisions that we have?
I think that's why I felt like this new program, kind of what you described, because we haven't been exposed, I don't think, as a board, to that concept. And so it's kind of very interesting. You know, I see how it would adapt into the, you know, the educational environment. Look forward to it.
Thanks. Can you turn it into another acronym that fits into everything?
Yeah. P O G. Well, speaking of acronyms, this presentation, I'd like to welcome Dr. Sloggi. The next piece is Alice. Dr. Kyle.
Thanks, Dr. Sloggi. I appreciate the board giving me an opportunity to present a new safety protocol that we're going to train all faculty, staff, and students during next school year. It's called Alice. It is an acronym, as Dr. Sloggi sent me up with that. The acronym is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. So how it got started, in 2001, a gentleman by Greg Crane decided to make kind of a proactive safety approach after he noticed, he's from law enforcement, he had a wife who's an elementary principal, he actually wanted to bring something different than just doing lockdown. So in 2001, this program came. It's a proactive approach. It gives our faculty, staff, and students options if the worst-case scenario ever happened. assumes that not every event is the same. It's not sequential. So when you hear Alice and you hear the acronym, it doesn't mean, well, you know, alert, lock down, inform, counter, evacuate. It doesn't mean it's sequential. It could be different ones. It's research-based, increase, and really, at the end of the day, it's a topic that most of us don't want to talk about, correct? Like if somebody were coming to one of our schools, Dr. Sloggi does a good job with SCL, our teachers do a great job in the classroom, our coaches, our club sponsors, every adult in a school, a nurse, is always looking to connect to a kid. That's our number-one defense. But if something ever happened, what I can tell you with Alice, and coming from a high school environment two years ago, teachers, students, and staff always talk about, is there something else we can do? And I heard about Alice as a principal. I got to this district with Safety Committee, and this past year, we talked about Alice and then Run Height Fight. Our district chose Alice. Alice is probably the preferred method in school districts right now. Go to the next slide. This kind of tells you where it is and where the footprint of Alice is. But right now, thirty-one percent of school districts throughout the United States have adopted Alice. We're not the first, but we're in that kind of first wave of adoption. And really, like when I talk about it, this is a drill, like our fire drill, like our tornado drill. This is a process that we're going to teach our faculty, staff, and students what to do if we have an intruder that comes in with a gun or with a knife. So that shows some of the different places that have adopted Alice. The first A in the acronym, right? I know you like acronyms, so it's alert. And then, and really, your PA announcement, you could hear it. The alert is, you hear what's going on, loud noises, text, bulletin boards, any way you can alert. There's all different ways you want to alert, and that's one piece. Like right now, what we're using, and we'll use till we transition, is lockdown. We get on a PA, we say lockdown. The alert for Alice is a little bit different, and I'll get into that as we go forward. This next slide talks about plain English. You've ever been somewhere and you hear code blue, code red, code silver? No one knows that except the people that work there, right? And sometimes the people that work there don't know it either because they only practiced it two years ago. So what Alice talks about, if worst-case scenario comes, and let's say I'm the intruder, the announcement would be, guy who's six foot, two hundred and eighty pounds, gray hair, running through, has a gun in the front of the building. They're talking in plain words about what's happening. You're giving locations out within the building so people know what's happening, as opposed to giving a blanket that there's an intruder. Lockdown's a little bit different. If you look at this room, those doors kind of go out. But if you think of this room as a lockdown, there's different ways that you could do it. Lockdown we use, it's a great piece. This is kind of a little bit of an enhanced lockdown. You see people are taking like a computer cord and tying it around kind of the door hinge so you can't open it. You want to really barricade that room. If something were to really happen and there was an intruder, the difference between a lockdown that we do now, where you get out of sight, is that you would take furniture, you barricade yourself in that room, and you make it harder for that intruder to get to those kids and the teacher. So that's kind of, like, that's a different level of lockdown, that that's something that our faculty, staff, and students will learn. And also, you know, lockdown's one piece, that's the L. There's some, there's some examples of, like, you could take all these chairs and pile it up, but the door opens out, right? So it just delays the person. How could you get it, and even a bookshelf? That bookshelf looks good, but if it's not heavy enough, somebody can open that door and push the bookshelf over. So we're talking about using heavy items, looking at what's in a building, in a classroom, and what you could use. If lockdown's the best option, this is an actual lockdown from a student from Kent State that had been trained in Alice at their school, their high school, and did this contraption with a cord and anything they could find to make sure that that intruder did not enter that part of the building. So what it does, again, like it gives you that fortified lockdown that will be very helpful. Here's some pictures of different ways to fortify and barricade. Use a belt, extension cord, computer cables, all these different things can hold the door closed so somebody can't get in. I don't have a slide with this, but what I'll tell you is, I'm Alice-trained and certified, and we will have eleven faculty and administrators trained, so that we can train next year. The Wheaton Police Department will also have eleven police, police officers trained as well. So we're going to train together with our faculty and staff. And what I'll tell you, like with the lockdown, is at the end of the day, what I learned through my training through Alice, I went in not knowing what it was, but what I learned through Alice is, kind of just getting in a corner isn't what we're going to want to do, we're going to want to change it. So even once you lock down, you tell the kids to kind of spread out within the building, like within the area. And like even if you think about it right now, what are some things if somebody were to come in? You could pick up your computer, you could pick up a full water bottle, throw it at somebody. Do anything to get that person off of what they're trying to do. And so lockdown brings in a lot of different pieces in that are different than what we do now. And part of what we're doing right now this summer, just so you know as a board, is high school students are different than middle school and elementary. So there's three other districts that I know that are close to us that have adopted Alice. We have Plainfield 202, we have Naperville 203, and Naperville 204. I've met with Naperville 204 to see how they unveiled it. I'm meeting with 203 next week. We're learning from both districts, as they did it last year, and we're making sure that it's unveiled appropriately at all three levels. So inform, I talked to you a little bit on inform, you want to make sure you're telling what's actually happening, the what, where, when, who, how. We want people to get on their phones, we want people to communicate this. It's a little bit different than just hiding and just hoping that the police will come. I say the play-by-play announcer, I kind of gave you an example of explaining myself if I were to break in here, but you want to give that information, and that's a piece of what it is. And the C in counter, counter's not fighting, it's not asking people to fight. What it is saying is it's trying to take back control, age-appropriate, and personal choice. When we went through this training, I mean, you don't know what's going to happen if an intruder actually comes. And there's options in Alice, correct? And not everybody has to counter, but what counter was is, basically what they showed in the training, and when we went through the training, is if somebody has a gun or a knife, you go towards that, you try and pull that arm down, somebody else pulls another arm, pull a leg and a leg, and you try and pull that person down. I don't like to share statistics, but two of the last three shootings that involved college students and high school students, they turned on the gunman, and instead of eighteen dead, it's like one dead. This is starting to penetrate through high school, college, out in the, out in the work community. It's scary to think about, but what we're, you know, counter is not fighting, but it is trying to take back control. If somebody can stop the gunman, gunwoman, that's what you want to do. So not everybody's asked to counter, we would never ask students to counter, we're talking about our adult, our adult faculty and staff. But that's the C in Alice. And the next piece with the back, I'll kind of share how important this is, is because if you know it's the main office and you're two hallways away, and you know if something's going down and there's an active shooter, get out. So one of the things we're working on, we talk about rally points, and where will the rally points be, and how will we get the students to the rally points? Because if they get out, we want them out of the building, get far away, and get to safety. We want them out, in a lot of the shootings that we've studied, some of the students just left. Just left and got away, and they survived. At the end of the day, like I said, Alice is another protocol. It's a scary protocol. I can see that in your eyes and just talking about it. It's scary to think about. Even though this only happens in less than one percent of the schools, I feel like, and our safety committee feels like, and all of our administrative and leadership team feels like, we need to practice this because this is the new norm in America. Students can take this, that they're going to learn, you could apply this anywhere. How can you get out? There's windows right here everywhere you go. It's not a happy part of American, like American culture right now, but from our standpoint, we do believe we need to go to the level where things have evolved, and we want to train our faculty and staff so we can make sure if this ever does happen, let's hope it never does. But if it does, we want to make sure our faculty, staff, and students are ready. So I know that's a quick, kind of brief cut into Alice. Couple things I wanted to share with the faculty, with the board, is that we did do an hour and a half training with our administrative team. Chris talked about it. So I took the hour and a half and tried to condense it as much as I could for all of you. And then we will have the first two days back of the first faculty meeting. We're going to put every building through a forty-minute presentation by one of the Wheaton Police Officers and one of the CUSD Alice-certified trainers, and we're going to give them a primer. There's a video that goes with it, so we're going to give that to all our faculty and staff. High schools and middle schools will be trained in November, and then elementary will be January. And then we will start discussing about how we're going to enroll the change from our current procedure to Alice sometime in, sometime in late winter, early spring of this year. So, you know, it's going to take a little while because it's a new protocol, we want to make sure we train everybody and we get it right. But the great part about Alice is they give us all the materials. Once you're trained, we can train multiple people. So our goal is to slowly unveil this, and we want to start with the middle school and the high school and the elementary school.
You mean the students?
We're all, yeah. So once all the adults are trained, then we're going to bring this to the student level. And so what I noticed in Naperville 204, Naperville 204, they had different units that were created for different elementary levels, and they unveiled it. And so we got, we got some examples from 204. I'm going to meet with 203, we really want to kind of see how they did it because they've done it already. And we want to make sure we balance this type of information so as we're not making people more stressed. We want to give our students, our faculty and staff next year, a feeling of in control, and there's things they could do if that ever happened. I think unfortunately, people are nervous about these things. And so what we're trying to do is use best practice to counter if that ever happened.
Julie, can I just ask a clarification? So.
So is this a change to our crisis protocols, or this is simply an addition to the safety elements we have in place?
We're adding one more safety protocol. ALICE is one more with fire drill, tornado drill, and other protocols secure and teach that we aren't used. This is just adding one more.
Do we have a secure entry in all buildings?
Yes.
And that was as, how many buildings do we have to actually improve like that?
Eight.
That was done last summer.
Yeah, eight.
Eight.
We have secure entries for during the school day, it's that before the school day, then there's, could be multiple electric points.
Agreed, I, I just think that we've taken a big step, though, in doing that part.
Yeah.
We focused on that in the, uh, the ref, the original, how about original referendum that did not pass, you know, we continued to, obviously, we can be concerned about the safety of our students.
Charlie, I know this is, you know, going to be a big process next year in terms of just, you know, educating people and that, but the two that are standing out in my mind, and I'll be curious, not, not tonight, but to be hearing about our, our, our guest teachers, our substitutes, and how that fits in, and our classrooms that are heavy special need, physical special needs, that kind of thing, how we're looking at that.
Right, that'll be addressed, uh, the special needs, um, during training, that's a piece of the ALICE training, and then also, we have enough licenses for all of our guest teachers, so they will all have the opportunity, and we're going to encourage them to watch that video. So they might not be able to make all the trainings, but they'll at least see the video, and going through the video, you have enough where we fall to know what we're going to be doing. And so we did buy enough license to make sure that all of our guest teachers would be able to see that video as well.
How will parents be informed?
Uh, District 204, what they did is, right when they got ready to do the middle schools and high schools, uh, there was communication that came from the superintendent and the communications director, so we're getting that from 204, we're also getting that from 203, so we'll start, I mean, at least what I've seen other districts do is they start communicating as we get closer to implementing that and training our, our faculty and staff.
All right, I'm sure we'll hear, continue to hear.
I know it's not an uplifting topic, let's hope this never happens, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, just one discussion item, Division 2022 update and board priorities for 1920.
Yeah, this, uh, so, I mean, it's listed as a discussion item, uh, but what I would say truthfully told, uh, this is really kind of a primer to, uh, to discussion for, for next month, so typically at the, the board level, as the board has gone about establishing or setting, uh, priorities for the, uh, the upcoming school year, um, that started with, uh, the strategic plan, and so last year, at the, uh, over the summer of last year, the document that, that I gave you again was the document from last year, that really took the Vision 2022 plan, took each of the items contained in the plan, and kind of mapped out, uh, a four-year implementation around, uh, those items. So with, uh, some new members to, uh, to our senior leadership team, um, we're in the process, uh, through kind of this, uh, this month of July, and really looking at where did we get in each of those areas, and do we need to make some, some kind of adjustments in our plans, um, for next year, that we'll be able to bring back to the board in the, the August discussion, but certainly, um, with two new board members that weren't a part of this presentation a year ago, we just wanted to bring this document back out so that you had a chance to kind of look at it one more time, uh, kind of reflect a little bit on kind of our, our priorities in the, in the big picture, and I think our goal in August would really be to kind of arrive at some direction around, what are those kind of key priority areas, uh, need to look at, look like for the, the upcoming school year. Some of them may not change, we, we may still be working on some of the, uh, the same areas that we've prioritized around S E L, you know, around some of our areas, but, um, but again, we just wanted to kind of put this back in front of you, and, and make sure especially for Susan and Dave, that, uh, you had a chance to, to really kind of get familiar with this document.
At this meeting, do we then typically also look at the parking lot? Do we still have a parking lot and bring that back, you know, just see if there are things that are still relevant on there?
Yeah, and, and I guess the other piece, uh, which would be, certainly, and, and we don't have to do it only at that time, I think the board, the parking lot is always available, if there's an item that a, a board member says, boy, I really would be interested in, you know, us studying this topic, if, you know, the, the, the time, you know, is, is certainly right, but, but yes, that's, you know, I think the parking lot is kind of tied into this, because we certainly have some items that, uh, I know, you know, some board members have said, boy, would have, you know, how about those, uh, high school start times, and, and, uh, I, I, we, we can study it if it's not financially a viable option, I just don't know what, what good investing a lot of time in studying it does until we sort of arrived at a, at a viable time, but those are, are good topics to kind of put onto a parking lot.
Can you email out to the board members that park a lot?
I can.
Just so we can, so, so, all right, you're, I think you're asking the board individually to take a look at this, kind of get up to speed with kind of where, what we laid out or reminded, what we laid out a year ago, uh, think about the things we would like to bring to the discussion, about possible ideas or things to focus on, I know it looks like you've got some of that, that was.
That was last year, yeah, we didn't, we did not update this yet, this is just the document you looked at last year, we're in the process of doing some updating to it that we'll bring to the next conversation, but I just kind of wanted to Brian, your thinking, make sure you had a chance to kind of reflect on this a little bit.
And at that meeting, can we also maybe look at possible topics for C A C, and then we see of all kind of, you know, combined?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, so, a little more preparation work to do for August, now we'll pass the policy page. Okay, uh, so we have a few written reports that are posted on our agenda, the monthly financial reports, the FOIA Freedom of Information Act report, and the Early Learning Center construction update, those are posted for the board, but also for the community to see, um, for information only, is there any questions or comments board members have about those documents?
I just have one on the, uh, I'll call it on, whoops, the proper term, I guess it's on the financial one, the, uh, go back.
Monthly financial report.
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, the monthly financial reports, that, there's an item, it's about the fifth page, I think, or the second page, I think, uh, there, the cash and investments from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, you know, we have about $10 million more money than we had beginning of the year. Appears that that's the unexpended escrow in the, uh, construction fund. When do we sell the bonds, I guess, or get the proceeds from, from the Early Learning Center?
They've already been sold.
Yeah, I know, but when do we get that?
When did we?
Is it before, before or after July of 18?
It was after.
Okay, so that's in that number then, and that's why we have about $10 million more in cash and investments at the end of the year. And then the other thing, that we pay back loans, I saw, in, uh, that's again a required state item, that we, all loans are repaid at least one day a year, is that what? And that's been accomplished, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and that was done in, in June? Okay, those are the two questions I have.
So it's nice to see some walls start going up at Jefferson, it'll be fun to watch over the balance, especially for the next few months, before we get into the monitor, the virus.
One item on that, I, I suggested that we, uh, we add to there the date in which we, we, on Nicholas's report, the date in which we anticipate students to be in the building, it's not really in there, and I, I'm confused by the, what, you know, final completion, because I think that includes the lockdown of the old building and all that, so nothing on their report addresses that. So, I mean, we're still targeting since August of 2020, is that right?
Yes, students move in in August.
Yeah, and that's not in there, and that, that's to me the biggest mon, you know, that's the most important stuff that we're, we're monitoring, is that, that, so, I didn't see that. It talks about beyond that date, is what we call.
Yeah, so, so the data, March 31st, 2020 is a substantial completion for the new building, which means the new building's done, and we get to occupy.
Okay, that's what that means, that's not clear?
Substantial completion is a.
And use.
Contractual to.
But we're not going to use it till, till August.
So, yeah, the building will be complete for our, for our use, school year will, school year will finish if the existing Jefferson one is.
To me, that's the most important item on that.
We consider it the building.
That date.
Good, okay, that's right. Okay, uh, any reports from board members? I have two real quick ones, I just, uh, heads up that, you know, once we get into the school year, I'll start laying out adopted schools lists, we'll revisit that, and then, just a quick update, if you recall, last month or the month before, I kind of laid out committees and talked about how we were going to try to approach the Student Excellence Foundation a little bit different, um, I did have some conversations with the president, I believe, of the Student Excellence Foundation, they expressed some concern about us not being as engaged as they're used to, so we're working together to try to figure out a way, maybe a shared, a shared idea of, you know, them coming to us every other month, as I explained to, to Jennifer, the idea that I want to give them a bigger platform, a bigger, more public view, then, then maybe they get in their meetings, and then maybe we rotate with board members, or a board member coming to every other meeting, kind of idea, maybe that's rotational, uh, and maybe giving a quick update of the entire meeting to have kind of a, kind of, kind of, what, what's the board thinking about, seeing what's on their agenda. So we're, we're looking at a alternate approach to what I had laid out previously, to address some of the concerns they had, they had expressed to me, so, more on that to be developed as we get into school year. Any other quick comments?
One quick question on that, on the signed schools, I, I think it's important not only for current board members, you know, new board members, future board, to have an, I'll call it an agenda to deal with, or a questionnaire, or some, some mechanism to say, why am I going to school, and maybe there's some opening conversation topics that might be looked at.
Yeah, so we have, there's another kind of template about, kind of what we're trying to accomplish, and I don't remember where that is up ahead, but it's.
I think it's important.
It's a little, what does it mean to be a board member within a adopted school?
Yeah, good.
Okay, so we have two topics for future discussion, the number one, the 2019-20 budget and the public hearing that we approved earlier at the August meeting, and then a follow-up to Division 2022, uh, implementation plan and the board priorities. Our next regular meeting is August 14th, 2019, here at 7:00, it's a week before school starts. Any public comments for tonight, right? Okay, so, next is closed session, so I'm going to move myself to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual threatened or a reasonably potential danger, to the safety of employees, students, staff, and the public, or public property, uh, under 5 I L C S 120 slash 2, subparagraf C, subparagraph A. Can I have a second to move into closed session?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson. Um, there's no action expected following closed session, because I have a roll call vote on this motion.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantree?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Mappus?
President. Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes, and we're going to adjourn this meeting and move into closed session. Thank you.